Mayor, you're live on YouTube and we are recording this Zoom meeting.
Thank you. All right, welcome, everybody. We will call this City Council meeting to order at 7:00 on September 14th of 2021. And for the roll call, I do want to say for the record that all council members are present, including our newest council member, Council Member Quoc. And so we'll go to item three, which is adoption of the agenda. And I do want to make a note that we will remove items four and five, since we don't have a closed session tonight. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right. Okay, so we'll call it Vice Mayor Geringer.
Aye.
Councilmember and jury.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And I am aye, so it is unanimous. All right, so we will go to public comments for items not on the agenda tonight.
Mayor, there is a hand raised. And for anyone else, I'll mention, if you'd like to make a comment at this item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. I'll bring in Jessica Lorden, followed by Minha Pham.
Hi again, everyone. Jessica Lorden here, following up on some of our conversations from yesterday. Part of the frustration is the onus that the city is putting on its citizens in terms of coming up with solutions. It's a really rigorous process in order to even get the city to listen. I was emailing back and forth with the prior transportation planner, well, now two transportation planners ago, and a direct quote from him is, as I mentioned before, if the community members can think of a solution that doesn't cost a million plus dollars or divert traffic to an already congested Maraga Road, then we would be all for it. And these are in relation to trying to calm traffic and create safe paths to school down top of road. Additionally, direct quote from Mike Moran, Justin and I have both instructed residents with suggestions to get together as a community with school officials and come up with steps that the city can actually implement, given budget constraints, right-of-way issues, drainage impacts, and existing vehicle traffic volumes during the school commute. Now, it might shock you, but I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm a CPA. Anything I come up with is not going to work because I don't know any of that stuff. That is his job to come up with solutions. I've given him my list of the, I don't know, half dozen items I think we should explore. And his response is, you need to submit a TARP and get petitions and sign it. But I'm not going to do that work unless it's even feasible, right? Like, why should I sink hours and hours and hours of my life into something, come up with what I think is a great solution, and he just says, oh, well, that's not possible. So we need our city and our staff need to get on it. They need to do their job and come up with solutions. Because right now, you're not going to have a CPA put your roads together. Nobody wants that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you, Jessica.
The next speaker is Minha Pham.
Hi, it's me again. I hope you have a good time sleeping yesterday. I know it's super late. So I thought about the conversation yesterday. It's got eye-opening for me how hard it is for the city council to navigate different interest groups. I thought children's safety should be number one thing, and no question about it. Clearly, I was just a bit naive. So I thought about that. And, you know, I'm totally in favor of an environment that works for everybody, in diversity and inclusion. And I think the group that support ADA, their interest is not in conflict with the interests of our children's safety. So ideally, we, I love to see a solution that that works. But in the event that you need to prioritize because of time and resources, I were thinking about how you prioritize it. I were thinking of scope of scale and alternatives. So for scope, one side is thousands of children who attend Stanley, for example, and their parents, their grandparents, their siblings. So thousands of people are affected by this lack of safety or safety issues around Stanley. On the other side, I'm not sure how many people have ADA needs. And I'm still learning about that concept around Stanley. Five people, three people? I don't know. But that data may be helpful with the decision. And in terms of scale, is one side is life and death, is mental health for children for many years to come in there, become an add-on. And the other side, is that like five minutes that they need to walk more to their car? I don't know. I just feel like this is drastic difference in terms of the impact of the problem. And the third issue, look at it, the alternative is not going to be possible to move a school or like move the families, thousands of them. But can we support the few people who need access parking problem? Like, can they sell their house and move somewhere? Can they, we support them to have a better living condition that is not in the way of our children's safety? I just, you know, want to expect that thought in terms of how the city prioritize, because clearly, we shouldn't have to be in a conflict position and compromise the children's safety because of some, some small interest group that we may have a better alternative for them instead of putting our children's safety below to address.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions for the speaker?
Um, I just wonder when Mike Moran is going to be attending so that I can address the concern, voice a concern directly to him. And I don't see him today.
He, yeah, I don't think he's going to be on any of our agenda items today. So, um, but we can pass this on if you'd like. Definitely email us, right? We all get emails.
Yep.
And it's a wonderful way to communicate with us as well. So, thank you.
The next speaker is Abigail Faitman, followed by David Clark.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Sorry about the lighting. I'm in a different space than usual. Hi, good evening. Nice to see you again. I am here because I want to express my concerns about the action you took last night. I wanted to make sure you were aware that the single-sided street parking, time-of-day parking that you approved last night is something that is, was never considered as part of the Transcerc conversations. When Bill Foxon and others who are opposed to removing street parking proposed a compromise, which was time-of-day parking, it was time-of-day parking removal on both sides of the street. And that is because of the way traffic and kids move through the area. So when we were talking about removing parking on one side of the street, that always included a protection, whether it was a berm, or bollards, or little buttons, or armadilloes, whatever the engineering treatment was, there was something physical that separated the multiple-direction traffic of kids and bikes from vehicles that are moving, when we had one side of parking removed. So I just want the council to be aware of this, that this is, you have taken this engineering of the street in a direction that was not considered by Transcerc, was not approved by Transcerc, and was not approved or vetted by the city engineer, at least in public. So I wanted you to be aware of that situation to make sure that you understand that this is something that is not a standard practice, nor something that has been vetted at all. And what you really did was an on-the-fly engineering of the street without really understanding how kids and bikes move in the area. So I am concerned about that. The second thing I want to talk about is the metric by which you're measuring this. Given that you've approved a time-of-day parking removal that is not particularly safe, when you check to see and count numbers, are there more bikes or fewer bikes that are using this? Does that really tell you anything? Or does it tell you that the treatment that you've selected doesn't make people feel more safe? It doesn't tell you if this community has a greater capacity to walk and bike to school. So I think you need to revisit your study questions around what you have determined as your proposed pilot. The pilot really is supposed to test whether parking removal can be tolerated for a cheaper on-street path versus a very expensive sidewalk, not whether time-of-day congested movement increases kids' ability to, or interest in biking and walking to school. So I just wanted to make you aware of these two very important factors, that your solution is not something that was vetted ever in the public, or discussed in the public, or even improved or endorsed by city staff when we were looking at all of them. And two, your study questions aren't necessarily going to provide an answer that will lead you to a better action to increase safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No. All right. Thank you, Abby.
The next speaker is David Clark, followed by Megan Mittman.
Hi, a lot of buttons to push here. I am, I didn't realize it was going to be a public comment in this continued session, so I wasn't really prepared to, I didn't put anything formal about this. But I, as Jordan just mentioned a couple of speakers ago, I, I'm also a CPA. I'm not a traffic engineer. And I was thinking about this both last night and this morning. And it seems to my CPA mind that the problem, and I don't mean this to be over-the-top naive, but the problem is, we've got a potentially, well, it's not potential, it's actually fatal combination of vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists or cyclists in the same area at the same time. So from my perspective, if we could remove one of those elements, say the vehicles, from a particular area for some limited period of time, that would go a long way to solving, to solving the possibility of there being a collision between a vehicle and a person or a cyclist. So what I'm thinking is, if we set up some kind of, call them safe zones around, and they're going to be different sizes around the relative each, each school, that streets could be blocked off somehow. I, I spent quite a bit of time in Hawaii, and there are a couple of elementary schools in Hawaii that have big signs on the streets, access, no, no vehicular traffic allowed between the hours of whatever, 12:15 and 1:45, whatever. And that seems to work. Now, granted, maybe it's a different culture, different response, but seems like there could also be some kind of pop-up barriers that we could install at strategic points that would not allow through traffic. You're probably going to have to have some exceptions for ambulances, or some kind of fire public safety vehicles. I don't know about delivery trucks. People, residents, we could hand out placards that said, big, big yellow placards that said resident. And if they have to go in and out during that timeframe, at least you know that they're probably going to be focused on safety, maybe more, more so than somebody doesn't live in the particular area. But it, it seems to me that if there's a way that we can separate the vehicles, pedestrians, from the pedestrians and the cyclists for, it would have to be a limited period of time, that that might be at least a short-term solution until we can figure something out longer term. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you, David.
The next speaker is Megan Mittman. And there are currently no hands raised after Megan.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you again. I'll be brief, but I did, similar to Abby, you know, of course, follow along all of last night. And so just wanted to make a couple of responding comments based on that, reiterating her concern that without a protection, I too am very concerned with the two-way shoulder on one side of the street with no protection, with, with no raised facility at all. That was not something that, that we ever recommended or, or supported as a design. And so I am concerned that that is, is what's going in without any protection. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, that a lot of your discussion last night about the time-of-day selection was based, I think, what was then finally corrected at the very end of your conversation, on the assumption that this project originated as a Safe Roots to School project, and, and my effort in it, and many of others, that's not what it was. It was to bring the trail to the school and to, to connect our neighborhood with the Stanley Medal with downtown. And it was always a neighborhood-wide project for everybody. I think Mike did correct the record at the end, but that was after you'd already compromised based on some, some false pretenses. So that was a very frustrating process to watch. And then finally, I'd just like to reiterate my request last night, that we reframe this upcoming September 29th session as a launch session rather than a listening session. Many of us in the community are deciding whether we want to participate in that. I very much would like to. But my concern that it's just yet another time to have to reiterate and repeat ourselves, rather than to move forward and take action continues. And I would, would love to be contacted or otherwise find out ways that, that many of the groups and many of the people that have been active for so long in this community on safety can be brought in as partners, and that we could be talking about action and moving forward, rather than feeling like this is a place that we're just going to come and repeat ourselves over and over again. We'd like the time to, to hear you and to, and to launch rather than to be listened to, because we haven't been listened to so far. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for Megan? No, thank you.
Mayor, there are no other speakers for this item.
Great. Thank you. So now we have the consent calendar, which is the same consent calendar, but just with the polled items from last night. And so how I'm reading that is that can I get a motion to adopt to pull all of the items on the current consent calendar for later in the meeting?
I'll move to pull the.
Carl, have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
No, that's okay. But aren't these already on the agenda here?
No, they, this is how they put them on the agenda. This is how it was, right? So we had to poll them and then talk about them. Because they were on the consent calendar and polled last night. I think it's six, one, half dozen the other. This is how the agenda was arranged. And so I'm interpreting this as, let's go and talk about it at the normal time in the meeting.
Okay.
So go ahead, Gina.
Okay, so I moved to pull items A, D, and F from the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. So Vice Mayor Geringer.
Aye.
Councilmember and jury.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we will pull all of those items and speak about them later in the meeting. Okay, so now we'll go to old business with Thomas Myers, the Economic Development Manager, and Tracy Robinson.
Okay, I believe everyone's here. My name is Thomas Myers. I'm your Economic Development Manager for the City of Lafayette. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the Lafayette American Rescue Plan Act funding and updates to the, and updates to results from the business survey. So I will now share my screen. I will try to share my screen. There we go. Okay. Again, this is the Lafayette American Rescue Plan Act. Introduce myself, Thomas Myers. Again, Angela Sui is up from HDL Econ Solutions, and Tracy Robinson, our Administrative Services Director. Just to recap where we are in terms of ARPA, the City of Lafayette received $6.3 million, one half which, which was received in July of this year, and the second half will be received in July of next year. These funds must be obligated by the end of December 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. And I was remiss in not saying hello to our new council member, Councilmember Quoc, because I'm not, but I will later. Just as a, again, as a review, these fiscal recovery funds can be used for these four broad categories, to respond to the public health emergency or negative impacts of the COVID-19 emergency, to respond to workers performing essential work during the public health emergency, can be used for the provision of government services to the extent that there's a reduction in revenue due to the health emergency, and to make improvements in water, sewer, or broadband, broadband infrastructure. Back in August, and end of July and August, we conducted a Lafayette business survey. We had several responses to the survey, and on the next slide will be some of the results from that survey. We had 78 responses from the approximately 1,700 cards that were sent out. These responses, the respondents to the survey are from a wide range of Lafayette businesses and nonprofits. One of the most significant results of the survey was that 91% of those responded were negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, primarily due to loss of revenue, reduced customer demand, and the effects of closing their business temporarily. The, the survey also indicated that marketing and business promotion for the City of Lafayette in terms of promoting businesses and nonprofits was a very strong theme. There were a lot of responses positive about shop local campaign, the community, a community gift card program, which I'll talk about in a moment, improved business signage for businesses, and improved public spaces, which, which could mean parklets, which could mean any sort of public space, or any space in the city that the public can enjoy. The ARPA Subcommittee is recommending to council that a company called Yifty be the program operator for our proposed Lafayette Community Gift Card Pilot Program. Some of the great features of the Yifty program include the customer service, the customization of gift cards, the personal hands-on assistance with setting up the program for both businesses and card purchasers, and the ability to directly respond to individuals and businesses if, for any program issues. The ARPA Subcommittee also recommends that we develop the program design and implement the program, and, and fix all the details of the program and provide the city council with updates. That will include recruiting businesses as well as doing marketing to have our residents shop at these businesses and purchase the gift cards. Because of some of the delays in the COVID-19 protocols and getting the initial business survey set up, we've extended, made some modifications to the ARPA project timeline, which was, which was presented by the ARPA Subcommittee at the last council meeting. This will include, because the business survey was extended two weeks, we want to extend the community survey two weeks also. And there are going to be some changes to the, the way the meetings are conducted with the community because of the new county, or because of the reinstated county COVID-19 protocols. We were intending to have in-person meetings, but at this time, we're going to try and continue to do community Zoom meetings. And those, the meeting dates and times will be posted on the city's ARPA website. So that essentially kicked out our timeline to, for an additional two weeks to help us design and distribute the community survey. This next slide, where we add on this slide is, we see where it says the week of September 13th, which is where we are now, we're doing the presentation about the business survey results of the Community Gift Card Pilot Program. During the week of September 27th, council will review and approve the Lafayette Community Survey, which will go out to the, to residents and anyone who has a business in Lafayette that wants to respond to the survey. The week of October 4th, we'll begin hosting the online Zoom community workshops to continue to gather input from residents and businesses, and we will launch the community survey online. The week of October 11th, we'll do the sales tax data analysis, data analysis presentation. Week of October 25th, we'll close the survey and begin to analyze the results. And then first weekend, first meeting in November, we'll make a presentation to council on community feedback, and council will deliver, begin its deliberations on how to allocate ARPA funding. So our recommendation, our recommendations tonight to the city council are, one, to direct staff to proceed with the design implementation of the Lafayette Community Survey. Number two, to approve the, to approve Yifty as the operator of the Lafayette Community Gift Card Pilot Program, and appropriate $30,000 of ARPA funding for this pilot program. And number three, to accept the modifications to the ARPA Funding Uses Timeline, which was presented in the last slide, and extends the timeline for approximately two weeks. The next steps in the process include where we are now in September for the community survey and the community workshops. Next month, we'll begin the community Zoom workshops and analysis of the community survey. November will bring us to the council policy decisions for ARPA funding and allocation of these funds. And in December, we'll provide updates to the city council and begin our reporting to the Federal Department of the Treasury. And if there are any questions from council, we are here to answer those. And I will stop sharing at this time, and turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, everybody. Thank you for your presentation. That was great. Any questions from council members? Okay, I have a couple of questions. So if we approve this money, how fast can we roll out the gift card program?
One of the things we are doing that I'm working, number one, working with some of the businesses in Lafayette, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, we want to discuss with the businesses actually when to roll out the program. The Subcommittee had some discussions about whether to do it before Christmas for the holiday, in time for the holidays, or wait until after the holidays. And I didn't want to, I don't think the Subcommittee wanted to make that assumption for businesses. We want to get some feedback before, from businesses before we actually roll it out. But it's going to take us a little while to set the program up with Yifty, if approved tonight. And we will be able to roll it out as soon as we get that feedback from businesses. If they want to do it before the holidays, it'll be rolled out before the holidays. If the majority of them want to do it afterwards, we'll do it then. But whenever it starts, it'll continue, and we'll continue to sign up businesses.
Okay, it seemed, I, I'm hoping that they think that that's a good idea to roll it out before the holidays to encourage holiday travel, traffic. But it sounds like we can't, if they choose that, we can roll it out quickly. So that, that's great. Great.
Plan, yes.
Super. And I, I'm just kind of a little bit separate. I know this, obviously, this survey doesn't include businesses that we lost, because they obviously weren't there. Do we have any idea how many businesses we may have lost?
I got some feedback in terms of the cards that we sent out for the survey that were returned. So that means that either those businesses aren't here anymore, or they've moved, or, or they've changed address. I don't think there's any way right now to get that feedback from those businesses that weren't there before, because there really wasn't an entire listing of businesses in the City of Lafayette. What I used was, was, part of what I used was the list that we used from Townsend, from some of the businesses that applied for some of the funding before, during the CARES Act. We also use the sales tax receipts from the city and send information to those businesses. And that had, that hadn't been updated for quite some time. So there were a lot of repeats, and a lot of businesses that no longer were in Lafayette. So what I'm hoping to have at the end of, of the survey process is at least a list of businesses that are currently in Lafayette, and then I can compare that with the cards that are no longer here, from, that were returned from the businesses that are no longer here.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. So any other questions? Like Councilor Quoc?
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas, for a good, clear presentation. I had a couple of questions here. One with relation to the gift card element, which is, am I to understand that you're asking for $30,000 to be allocated, of which some will go to the program fees, but some to be allocated of which some will go to the program fees, but some will actually be used for, is that the contemplated matching like $25, the city matches a $50 gift card with $25 from that uh pool of 30,000?
Those are exactly the details that the Subcommittee is going to continue to work on. Uh, what we wanted to do tonight was get permission from council to move forward with the program. And then have the Subcommittee work out those details to provide the best uh scenario for both businesses and gift card purchases. To make it as simple as possible. And one of the, one of the possible scenarios is that actually two for one. Or it could be some percentage, but I think the Subcommittee wants to discuss that in terms of how can best benefit businesses and residents in the city.
Okay, so the, the 50/50 split was an example to be determined by the Subcommittee. But as of today, you're still asking for a budget to be limited to $30,000, right? It's not going to come back with $60,000.
It's possible that it could.
Oh, okay.
It's possible that it could, all depending on how the program goes. Which is why we wanted to do the pilot with just a few businesses to get it started. Then to see what the response was going to be from both the business community and the residential community. If it shows that we have a healthy response, which I think we're going to have. Then we're going to be coming back to council and saying, we've got a healthy response, this program is going well, we've got a number of businesses signed up. And residents are actually using the program. We think we should increase the allocation from the ARPA funding.
Okay, but as of, the ask right now is for 30,000 and you might come back later for more, right?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying. Uh, my second question was that, uh, one of the members of the public had submitted comments to this. This was Grace Dixon. Uh, and um, for a proposed use related to park acquisition. And I noticed in your presentation talked about the, there was a slide that talked about the four permitted uses of the ARPA funds, right? One, two, three, and four. And I was, I'm just wondering whether you've had the opportunity to review uh Ms. Dixon's note and whether um, her, um, part of her presentation talked about how other cities are earmarking some of these monies towards park acquisition. And so I wasn't really clear whether like the number four item in your um, presentation, talking about the improved public, you know, parklets and so forth. Uh, whether it's your understanding that this funding could also be used for real estate acquisition or park, uh, you know, land acquisition.
Well, I think with, I think the first thing we want to do is not only collect information from folks that have sent in ideas, we're also collecting information from other individuals that have submitted emails. And that have spoken to me directly and are also sending information to council. What, what, I think the process we want to do is put all that into one pot. So the council has the opportunity to look at everything as a whole and not single anything out in, in, in advance and to look at all the proposals and everything from the public at the same time. There is uh, there is some provision in the ARPA regulations about infrastructure, but it's unclear to me as to whether or not right now, park purchases or anything like that fall under the category of infrastructure. That's something we'd have to specifically look at and then give back and give that feedback, not only to the people that have submitted that information, but to council as well. Uh, all depending on, all depending on what council does in terms of how, of how ARPA funds are allocated, because one of the permitted uses of ARPA funding is to replace lost general fund revenues. And in turn, council could turn around and say, well, we're going to take that money back from our general fund to replace our general fund and then spend money on, from the general, from the general fund on projects and programs that aren't necessarily included under ARPA.
Got it. Thank you, Rick, for the explanation.
Right, Councilmember Manderi.
I just want to emphasize that last point because I think that one is going to be very important for us.
Yes.
The uses will most likely for parks, we can say how parks downtown can increase commerce. Um, I guess my view is that it's not included under the ARPA infrastructure. But if it's reimbursed to, goes to reimburse the city for lost revenues, then we can use it uh, for that purpose. So that, that's going to be a very important uh, method for us.
Vice Mayor Carragher.
Excuse me. So on, on that subject, um, one of my questions that I was going to wait until after public comment, but was that we will is the sense that the community survey will be co, sort of a look at various ideas and what the community, a prioritization, if you will. Um, that we will then as the council be able to use with how to, how we would prioritize what the community input is. And so it would come to, um, you know, obviously economic development and our small businesses and the vital. Well, maybe not obviously, but I think so. The vitality of our, you know, uh, businesses in the downtown. Um, our sales tax revenue, looking at Councilmember Quoc's, you know, example on behalf of Grace, Parks. Um, we've also had folks, you know, um, suggest that maybe there's uh some potential use of this on infrastructure in terms of safety and safety around our schools and throughout the community. And so again, that could be, we put it back into the general fund and then we prioritize it. And I know tonight's not the community survey time, but in terms of encouraging people to, you know, continue to write to the council and submit ideas. Um, that this is the plan of how we will look at this. And so I wasn't, I'm pretty sure that's what a community survey would do, but allow us with, to have information and prioritize. And I see Tracy nodding her head, but.
Well, yes, that is, that's absolutely correct. We want to, we want to make sure that the community has time and has the ability to provide input both to the Subcommittee and to council. And to submit their ideas both through the business survey, which we've already conducted. And the community survey, which we will be continuing to conduct over this month and next month. And I want to emphasize again that just because a business or an individual didn't participate in the original business survey, they can still submit those ideas as a business to the city and they'll still be put in the same pot of information that we will review and analyze and present to council.
Great, thank you. Councilor Dawson, you had your hand up quickly or was it up or?
I could wait for discussion, actually. Okay, great, thanks.
All right, any more questions? All right, not seeing any. We'll go to public comment.
Mayor, there are some public comments for this item. I'll move in Grace Dixon, followed by Abigail Faitman, followed by Dawn Eam.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, if you have any questions about any aspects of the research that I emailed, I'm here for, for your questions. But I do have comments regarding the business survey and the upcoming community survey. I appreciate you surveying the business owners and even allowing the write-in other option in much of the survey. However, the business survey effectiveness could have been much better. For example, other as a choice usually catches marginal answers. But in the business survey, other was the number one highest response for business type. Other was the fifth highest response for what type of assistance would be helpful. And other, and perhaps of greatest concern, other was the second highest response to what improvements to the downtown would be helpful for your business. This indicates a lack of adequate sample size and a lack of businesses knowing what may help them most effectively. In addition, the business survey did not include parks, plazas, trails, or any community destinations as an ARPA investment option. Even though residents have listed great parks and trails as a second priority, second only in importance to safety. I request that this mission be rectified for the community survey since both safety and great parks and trails are indeed interrelated. Specifically, if you may please choose parks and recreation projects you favor from the project table that I sent. And include them as separate options on the survey. For instance, acquiring Boswell site for a community center. PSBS internet and evacuation site, acquiring Wilkinson site for a new downtown park with creek path and view. Creating a standby parkland acquisition fund to expedite future parkland ex opportunities. Um, asking the community about specific, asking the community about specific options is much more effective. And also, is there a public process for planning the survey language or a public committee that people can join? Uh, please conduct, no matter what you decide, please conduct a thorough return on investment analysis for every ARPA investment that we do. So for instance, we've done a gift card program before and I'm not a fan. Uh, what was the return on the last gift card program we did? How much business did we gain from our last gift card program? Um, and here are some other of my concerns about the gift card program. For example, gift cards and loans. Let's say $1,000 in gift cards was spent at Mangia. And Mangia, Mangia also received an ARPA business loan. One month later, Mangia closes without notice and terminates its employees. Lafayette did not profit from that gift card and loan disbursement. This is not a lasting solution to an ongoing problem. And I think those return postcards and all those the closed businesses that we talked about or that the gentleman talked about in his presentation are part of the problem of gift cards. You don't know who's going to be around. All right.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you. You wrote a great letter and yes. It's all in there. All right, any questions for Grace? No, but thank you very much for your input.
The next speaker is Abigail Faitman, followed by Dawn Eam.
Hi, good evening, council. Uh, my name's Abby Faitman. Um, I am here to speak on the ARPA funds. Um, I want to reiterate or I guess put my thumbs up or gold star on everything that, uh, the previous speaker just said. Um, Grace Dixon also spoke about this at the Parks, Trail and Recreation Commission meeting uh, last week. Um, there are different priorities for um, all groups. Um, but one thing which is very clear is that we need to make sure we are writing, we are asking the correct questions when we send out these surveys. Um, that means we need to do thorough research on what is an appropriate and allowable use of the funds. Um, these funds seem to be, though there are broad categories that have very specific language. It does seem that communities are using these for a wide range of activities that are not immediately apparent when you look at the use categories. So linking activities to public health is a appropriate use, even if it doesn't fall into sewer, broadband, and I forget what the third, third thing is. So when we look at safety, trails, complete streets, these are things that other communities are directing money to because there's a direct connection to livable communities, healthy communities. Um, and the same thing goes for parks and recreation opportunities. Um, when we look at long-term investments that will provide a return to our community. So I want to make sure that staff and consultants and whoever's working on this really does a deep dive on eligible uses. So that we're asking a correct, the correct question so that people can provide answers that are really going to inform how we prioritize using the money. Um, as has been said in many other meetings, budgets and funding are moral documents. That's where we show what our priorities are. It's not just lip service. And I ask you to look deeply at how we can spend these funds to truly benefit what this community is demanding from you right now in the light of current events and events that have been ongoing and problems that have been ongoing for the last decade plus. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions for the speaker? No, thank you, Abby.
Next speaker is Dawn Eam, followed by David Clark and Adele Connor.
Good evening, sorry about that. I agree with Abigail and Grace's uh, former information that they provided and requests. Uh, thank you also to Thomas Myers about calling me directly and asking what the East End smaller businesses um, needed and wanted and the issues that we specifically have and are unique to the area. Um, again, I guess I, I want to make sure that the small businesses regarding that are not part of the chamber are included somehow. And he mentioned, I guess, the uh, sales tax um, is included in that as far as the getting in contact with these people. But I also again want to bring up about property owners specifically by APN number not being contacted since these funds are tax money that need to be um dispersed according to what the people of Lafayette, who are property owners and have an interest in how the funds are used, um, can be used. So, thank you.
Thank you. So are you saying that the property owners by APN were not contacted? Is that, did I misunderstand you?
I don't, oh, Mr. Myers can address that. I think he's going to look into that.
Okay.
Property owners were not contacted for the business survey. I will attempt to do that for the, include them in the community survey.
Okay.
By NP, APN numbers?
By, by properties that are in the city of Lafayette.
Including businesses, including businesses and residential and everything. I got it. Okay.
And Mayor Candell, I just, I do want to mention that we did quite a lot of outreach on our, all of our media channels. It was not, I mean, we put things in our roundup, I think for three or four weeks in a row. We put several announcements on Nextdoor. We put announcements on Facebook and Twitter. So I just want to make sure that you understand the totality of how we reached out to all interested parties um, in Lafayette. So it wasn't just the chamber and it wasn't just through tax. We tried to be very broad um, in getting the word out to people who are interested, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you for all your help. I was just clarifying what uh, Dawn had said. Any other questions for the speaker? All right, thank you. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
The next speaker is David Clark, followed by Adele Connor.
Wow, I'm getting faster. All right, well, I've got way more than three minutes. So I'll try to pack this in and if you, if you're curious about more, ask me a question. But um, Mr. Myers, you're looking for three things tonight. Uh, the, the, the third one's easy. I agree with extending the timeline, no problem. The first one about developing the survey, I've got a couple of comments about that. Um, I was happy, I'm a member of the Creeks Committee, as most of you probably know. Uh, we were happy to see the inclusion of the Creeks uh, as an option in the business survey. And we hope, we'd like, I'm making a pitch now that the Creeks and parks and trails be an option. Hopefully the three intertwined, because they in reality are intertwined, be an option in the community survey. Um, we as a Creeks Committee have a meeting tomorrow night and are, we have on the agenda, uh, we're going to put together a letter requesting um, expressing some thoughts and requesting some specific things. And that was as opposed to responding to either of those surveys uh, as a committee. So we'll, we'll do that tomorrow. I've also included as a public comment, um, a statement that we as a Creeks Committee approved and sent to um, GPAC with respect to the content, the suggested content of the vision statement that they're working on and that that should include parks, trails, and creeks together as in, in shorthand as a as indicated in the downtown specific plan and the downtown Creeks plan. Uh, so that leaves the vast middle area. That's where, we're, we're in favor of the survey moving forward. But the vast middle area has to do with this pilot program for $30,000. I'm hoping that this does not indicate that there's a consideration that you might want to spend a full 6.3 million bucks on, on gift cards. I think that would be a mistake. I think that would be an overreach. Some's okay, but that, I, I'm hoping that the existence of the survey and we're having a discussion about infrastructure to some extent tonight means that there's at least, there's a possibility of some funding for other than gift cards. I think, and I want to say this before I actually run out of time, that bibliography that Ms. Dixon put together is fantastic. She did it herself. It's categorized by topic. It's not just a random list of, of articles. It's categorized by topic. And she's focused in on the topics such as using ARPA funds to acquire parkland, improve parks, creek walks, community centers. They're topical. So there are five pages of small print bibliography there. Every one of those articles is telling you that these folks, that these cities and, and perhaps counties around the country are using ARPA funds for that type of infrastructure. Personally, I think it's a slam dunk. I mean, I don't think there's a question that, that that type of expenditure is allowable under the ARPA funds. We, I guess, need to do some due diligence and confirm that, but I, I, I don't think that's up for grabs. The other thing that's fascinating to me is in what Ms. Dixon submitted. She has on the third page, there's a chart based on a parcel of land in Lafayette of what the development was at the of what the development was at the time that Little House was acquired in that same parcel and what it might look like with 10 units on that parcel. And when you look at that, okay, you look at that, we need creek walks.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, any questions for David? No, appreciated everything you're saying. Thank you.
If any members of the public would like to comment on this agenda item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom.
I think you had Adele. Was she coming?
Her hand is no longer raised. Oh, here we go. Okay, I will bring Adele Connor in now. Thank you.
Hello?
Hey, Adele.
Hi. So I didn't mean to raise my hand in the first place. I'm not too savvy with this Zoom thing. Just like I'm not too savvy with what's going on with what you're speaking about. I just thought I would turn it on and see what you're all talking about. I started my business in Lafayette in 1982 and I bought a building in Oakland, Emeryville in 1985. So I've been wholesaling and have a factory there for 39 years. Oh, I still do business because I wholesale. I still do business in Lafayette. But I have nothing much to say, except I think a survey with the citizens is a great idea. And I think funds could be used for businesses elsewhere other than gift cards. That's how I say I'm a subject. Sorry. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Adele.
Sure. Thank you.
There is an additional public speaker. I'll bring in Stella.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say that I'm tuning in now and kind of dialing into this ARPA concept. And I just like what I heard. I like the idea of thinking creatively about ways to use the funds to support many different needs of the community. I know you all heard me yesterday when I spoke that you needed to think creatively about sourcing funds for really necessary safe routes to schools projects, infrastructure needs. I also completely think that looking at ways to invest these funds for parks and recreation is important. I think a long time back, I can't remember exactly how many months, I spoke to you about, I believe, the Wilkinson property and consideration of acquiring that for a downtown park. And I remember speaking about just how it's important to have destinations, attractions in downtown, that even if they're not a retail business, they would benefit retail businesses by providing another enjoyable space for people to enjoy, to visit. And so I just really think that's a very interesting idea that Grace Dixon's brought up. And I think that the council should definitely consider thinking creatively about the varying types of projects that these funds could be applied for. And I really look forward to getting the community survey soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you, Stella.
There are no other public comments on this item there.
Great. All right, so. So we have a couple. Does anybody have any other questions before we give direction? I do have one question. In this, if we do the general plan replenish concept, are we limited to those funds that we directly identified as a loss during the pandemic? Are we limited to that? Because that was a specific amount.
Yeah, I'm going to answer that. There's a formula that we put in and it basically calculates how much of the money or how much the city experiences in a loss, something that was put together by CalCities. When we do that calculation, our calculated loss actually outstrips the $6.3 million by quite a bit. So I want to be clear, I am not recommending this, but
Right, just saying.
the city could appropriate the entire $6.3 million into its general fund. And then once it's part of the general fund, it could then allocate those funds really anywhere that the council would like to, that they could allocate any other general funds. I do think that, and Angela Mayer may not, I didn't spring this on her, you have to be careful. Once it's general funds, if you decide, I'm not saying you do, to give grants or loans or something, you do have to be careful about it being a gift of public funds at that point. So you couldn't necessarily give money out as a gift or a grant if you were to appropriate it out of general funds. So that's sort of how that money could be appropriated. But by my calculation, we have far outstripped the $6.3 million.
Exactly the answer I was looking for. Thank you. All right, so any other questions? All right, so we've got things. We're supposed to direct staff to proceed with the design and implementation of the Lafayette Community Survey. So do we have any thoughts on that?
Fully support developing the survey and the timeline for bringing it back to us for council review. I understand the subcommittee will be very involved in that. And you've heard some of the input this evening around, you know, some of the the survey questions and making sure that, you know, that the tool that we're using gets us to the answers that we want so that we're making sure that, yeah, that we get the best information we get to be able to guide how to use the money to meet the needs of the community.
Right, Councilman Dory.
Just to move things along, I'll move adoption of the staff recommendation.
Okay, go ahead. I was going to say the subcommittee. I'm happy to second unless Gina wanted to do that.
Well, I'd seconded. Sorry. Sounds great. So if we don't have another discussion, we can go ahead and vote on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I think, you know, this is directed on the gift card program. And the intention of that was, because we got the money, we wanted to make sure we reached out to local businesses who were, you know, obviously immediately impacted by COVID in terms of, you know, a necessity for some economic recovery help. So the gift card program is a good way to, one, do what we're doing, create the surveys to find out, you know, what we need to do, what businesses would respond to. Get Thomas actually doing a wonderful job out on the street and meeting people to get direct feedback as well as help educate the community as we go forward to what ARPA actually is and what we can be doing with it. So this, appreciate all the comments that came in. This is exactly what we're looking for and that will be continuing in more depth, obviously with the community survey coming out and the planned meetings. So we can bring back to council, round out ideas as well as data, so.
Great. So we have a motion on the table? All right, so take a roll call vote on this one. Vice Mayor Geringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dory?
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Clark?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so that one is unanimous. So now we have the next two, which is the approved, the UFT is the operator for the Lafayette Community Gift Card Pilot Program and appropriate $30,000 of ARPA funds with the program details approved by ARPA Subcommittee. Vice Mayor Geringer?
I think we, if I understood the motion correctly, Councilmember Endory made the motion to accept all of the recommendations.
Oh, all the recommendations. Thank you. You're right. He did.
Yeah, we started out, I agree, but yeah, we started out as an individual, one by one. But I believe the motion maker and the seconder.
And yes, understood that. I was the only one confused. Thank you. And my vote does not change, so.
Anyone wanted to discuss, I'll withdraw the motions.
No, 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 no. I don't. I don't. Thank you. All right, so we have direction. Is that sufficient for everybody here? We're all good? All right, Thomas and Tracy and Angela are all nodding, so thank you. And my cat agrees. All right, thank you, everybody.
Angela, thanks, Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will move on to item 9B with Jonathan Fox.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. On July 26, 2021, the council considered the Whitehead's appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of Samantha Townhomes. This is a 12-unit condominium project on Second Street in the downtown. The council denied the appeal and upheld the Planning Commission's approval. And at the request of the appellant, the council directed staff to bring back a discussion of refunding the appeal fee. The filing fee for an appeal is 75% of the original application fee. For Samantha Townhomes, the applicant, the developer paid about $16,800 and 75% of that, which the appellant paid in appeal fees, amounts to about $12,600. The staff time spent on the one staff report and one public hearing would not be equal to the appeal fee that was collected. So in this case, staff recommends the council refund 50% of the appeal fee to the appellant. The Lafayette Municipal Code does not prescribe a process to issue refunds for discretionary applications. And so direction from the council is needed, and that's the reason for today's discussion. Here for any questions available. I know the appellant is here, is tuning in. So if you wish to bring them on, you're welcome to.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for Jonathan? I have a question, and this may be kind of an overreaching question. In how the success rate of the appeal was explained to the appellate? So we get really good legal advice, you know, from our legal team about when we're going through approving projects and telling us what we can and can't even talk about. And I was wondering how much information like that, even legal advice, was given to the appellate to help them with this appeal?
So the appellant asked for the process for the appeal and explained the process. They never asked a question about what is the success rate going to be? And so I didn't offer my opinion from that, as I don't with any application.
Yeah, and I'll follow on what Jonathan said, that we would never provide legal advice. We're not attorneys, but what we regularly do is lay out for an applicant or a neighbor what the regulatory framework is, what the findings are that would need to be made in order to approve or deny a project. And we can talk about the given project and whether or not, in staff's view, that those findings can or cannot be made for the reasons that we ultimately lay out in the resolution. So we do provide that to the applicant and the neighbors if they ask. And we do that in the staff reports as well as layout what the rules are regarding the application type, if you will.
I just missed a whole bunch of that. I am sorry. My internet turned off. So I got to the point where we kind of laid out a regulatory framework, but that was where it stopped. I'm sorry.
Absolutely fine. So yeah, that is part of our responsibility is when we are writing staff reports, advising applicants, potential applicants, when they come in contemplating a project, what are the rules around X, Y, or Z? So it is common for us to lay those rules out and lay out what findings would need to be made in order to grant a specific kind of permit or deny a certain kind of application. So that is par for the course. It's very much part of what we do. And then we can speak to what in our evaluation is of that that we ultimately lay out in the resolution for consideration by the hearing body.
Right. And so, but the appellate doesn't, would have to read all that or somehow get that from our staff reports? Is that in order to understand that?
Yeah, we lay it out in the staff report for the applicant, the appellant's. But, and so those are part of our audience, but also the hearing body themselves and general members of the public.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so I guess I will go to public comment.
If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. And we do have the applicant wishing to speak, so I'll bring them in now.
Hi, thanks very much. I'm Jeff Whitehead. I think we talked to many of you last time. Maybe it's been about over a month. Thank you, Mayor Candell and Jonathan also for discussing this item. I just want to appreciate, you know, coming back to this and, you know, considering reducing the appeal fee. We may have hoped a little bit more than 50%, but I think we're open to whatever amount seems appropriate. I just felt like I do want to make one minor comment, which is just, I feel like, I know there's a question, it seems, about whether the letter that we submitted that was not given to the Planning Commission, we had submitted on June 19th and the Planning Commission was in attendance on June 21st. And so I guess there was that timeframe where our letter was not received by the Planning Commission in time for their review. And so I guess the question that was raised, I guess, in the report about this appeal fee reduction was whether or not that letter would have had any impact on that meeting or whether it would not have had any impact. And I don't know if that's how important that issue is, but I just wanted, thought in my mind is that if the letter had been received, perhaps it would have been, there may have been a slightly different outcome. I have no idea. So anyway, I just wanted to make that statement. So thanks very much.
All right, any questions for the speaker? Any questions for the speaker? All right, any other comments? Do you have any other public comment?
No, Mayor. There are no other public comments on this item.
Okay, great. So do we have any other questions from council or any other comments from council? All right, Councilmember Endory?
Yeah, I'll just say that I support the staff recommendation. But I will say that this is very unusual to refund an application fee like this. So I think we need to make it clear that this is not intended to be precedential, that this is based on unique circumstances, the fact that the letter didn't make it. So there's a due process question. And in my mind, the impact that this has on a business providing essential services during the pandemic and a business that we learned during the hearing received pandemic.
and a business that we learned during the hearing received pandemic-related assistance. And also the fact that there was just one hearing when we base our fees on, on more than one. So based on all that, and with just making it clear that this is not intended to set a precedent, I would support the staff recommendation.
All right, any other comments?
So I will move to approval of the staff recommendation.
And I'll second with, and thank you, Councilmember Endury, for, you know, highlighting the, that we're not intending to set a precedent here and that there were very unique circumstances. And then I'll second.
So, thank you. I totally appreciate that, and I, I support voting on it. I do want to say that I, I would, I think that we are, we should do a better job in educating appellate's and making sure that they understand the environment, that even we counsel, we counsel have very little control about projects, and the, the threshold is extremely high in order to get anything, any sort of changes to a project. We basically sometimes don't even get really good design review, much less our planning commission is basically a rubber stamp on these processes as well as our city council. We basically have to beg and hope with their goodwill that they will implement changes, even safety changes, even pretty gross safety changes. We have no control. And that is what the state has done to us with these series of bills that have eroded local control. It also means it has eroded your appeal control or how effective or how, how, how much of a success you may have as an appellate. I think we shouldn't even take future appeals on projects where we know that legally they've got no chance. We should just say, no, we, we won't do it. We should modify our appeal process on these big projects where we know even our hands are tied. And so I just want to make sure that we're not taking anybody's money when the success rate is basically zero. That doesn't seem right in the future. I know in this case we did. And there was a procedural problem, and that makes sense, and we should cut the fees. I wholeheartedly support that. But we should change our process in the future. I, I hope that we can at, at least even have a, you know, some boilerplate kind of wording to them, to, so they really know what they're getting into and what their money is being used for. So anyways, that is what my, my hope would be in the future to staff to really make an effort and a Mala even to create some wording to them. So they understand, you know, the HAA and they understand, you know, all the limitations in there that are the, the, the jumps, the hoops that they're going to have to jump through based on what the HAA's limitations on health and safety are to prove. So that's my comment. Councilmember Endury.
I, I'm assuming your comments are limited to multifamily projects?
Oh, yeah, that residential is totally different, right? Because the rules around that are very different. These are all the ones, the, the projects that are coming in under the HAA or density bonuses or any of the state laws that take away even our local control. Right? And Mala knows what they are. We know what they are when they're coming through, right, per project. All right, Councilwoman Dawson.
I, I just want to also just be in deference to, to the developers that it is a case-by-case basis. Obviously, that we work with different developers with a different extent of collaboration. So I don't know about discouraging the appeal process, because the process itself, I think, is a good process. But you're right, I think, education of what our limitations are based on new housing and laws would be important and, and really incumbent on, on council, I think, to direct some sort of education path. I think that might be the, a good route to go.
Vice Mayor Garriger.
And just in term, and I was watching Mala, but I mean, in terms of how far down the path we go, considering what we're looking at, I mean, would it be that we would during our council, when we request something to come back, that we would do that? I don't know. I, I was beginning to feel we were going.
I was looking at it too.
We are, we are, Vice Mayor Garriger. I think what is before you is whether to reduce the appeal fee as opposed to the appeal process as a whole.
Okay, but then we should bring it back if we would like to. Right. Thank you. I totally agree.
Council's perspective. Yes, you absolutely can bring it back.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any more comments? We want to like to vote? All right, Vice Mayor Garriger.
Aye.
Uh, Councilwoman Endury.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And am I actually, I'm going to be a no. I was hoping that we could give them back more money. So, but I, I appreciate everybody's decision on this and think that that was the right decision. All right. Thank you. I will go on to item nine C. Yes.
Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on, on the discussion you just had. Is the council asking staff to bring back a discussion on education to applicants or potential appellants on housing projects?
I would like that. I think that Greg says that we're giving that to the applicants. We should also give it to the appellate's.
I, I believe he said appellate's and applicants, so those who, yeah, he, he mentioned both.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, let's continue to be very robust.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine C.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Suzanne Erle, and I'm the city's communications analyst, and I am happy to be here tonight to talk to you about hybrid meetings. So staff has been looking into the logistics of continuing to offer a remote participation option once the city resumes in-person meetings. And so we are referring to this as a hybrid meeting, because folks would be able to remotely participate in a meeting that was being held in person. And tonight, the city council will be asked to provide directions to staff as well as to appropriate fifty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds towards hybrid meetings in the Don Tatsman Community Hall and the Art and Science Discovery Center at the library. So for a little bit of background on this item, back March seventeenth, twenty twenty, when Contra Costa County and a number of other Bay Area counties issued the Shelter at Home order due to the coronavirus pandemic. On that same day, the governor issued a number of health and safety orders, including an executive order that temporarily allowed local and state legislative bodies, such as yourselves, to hold meetings via teleconference and waiving certain provisions of the Brown Act. Specifically waiving temporarily that meetings must be conducted in physical locations where members of the public can participate. A majority of teleconferencing, city council members must be physically present within the agency's jurisdictional boundaries. And that the agenda identifies the location for each of the locations where city council members are participating, and that those are accessible to the public. So that's what was primarily waived by the governor's executive order. So that order did allow Lafayette and other cities to hold public meetings online like they're doing tonight. And that has been well received by the community. That executive order is actually set to expire on September thirtieth if the governor doesn't take any action. And additionally, on your pulled consent items that you'll discuss later this evening is a bill, Assembly Bill three sixty one, that if enacted, would allow agencies to continue to teleconference by changing certain Brown Act provisions pertaining to the physical access and, and quorum requirements during declared emergencies through the end of twenty twenty three. So that's a little bit of background for you. Adding remote participation to live meetings does add a level of technical complexity to the proceedings that hasn't been fully tested. But staff has been looking into how we could offer this in Lafayette. And so we do expect that there would be some, you know, technical issues as things are rolled out. But we do have a plan that we're proposing tonight that is in two phases. So staff is recommending that we first focus on the meetings of the city council, the planning commission, the design review commission, and the transportation and circulation commission, or TransCir. And that other advisory bodies are addressed in a, in a secondary phase. So those four bodies that I listed meet in either the community hall or the arts and sciences building when they do meet in person. That's their typical meeting location. The other advisory bodies meet in a number of different rooms around town. So some hybrid meeting logistics and considerations. So hybrid meetings would have a need for additional or different hardware in each of the meeting rooms where they would be offered. And typically, the setup for each of those meetings would, would take a bit more labor. We have some technical limits. The city has one YouTube channel, and so we can only stream one live meeting onto YouTube at a time. So concurrent meetings cannot both be shown on YouTube Live. And in order to stream onto our website, we use Granicus streaming services. And that does require specific hardware specifically in that room. So currently, there is a Granicus encoder in the community hall where the city council meets. And there is an audio-only Granicus encoder in the arts and science rooms, but the smaller conference rooms do not have an encoder. Also, rooms with sound systems, like where microphones are used, are more complex, more complex than the smaller conference rooms. And running a hybrid meeting in, say, the, the community hall that has a more robust AV existing system would actually require additional staff at the meetings to operate the, the audiovisual and the streaming system. Additionally, staff wanted to raise to your attention tonight that the city council would need to set a policy decision regarding whether remote participation would be an auxiliary to the in-person meetings. If we have a hybrid meeting, is the on, online or the remote participation offered as a convenience? For example, if a technical problem, either on the city's end or on the user's end, prevented remote participation, meaning a, a public comment or comment by an applicant or appellant, for example, we would want to have a policy in place if that meeting should be canceled or if the meeting would proceed normally as an in-person only meeting. So that's something we wanted to raise tonight and would obviously have to bring back to you in the future. So the proposed solution for phase one would be looking at offering hybrid meetings in the community hall, so in-person attendance as well as remote participation. That room would have a multi-camera system that could be streamed, could be live streamed to the website and onto YouTube. You know, with auto captions for those meetings, live comments coming in via the Zoom application, as well as video and screen sharing in that room. And staff is estimating that that would cost up to about twenty five thousand dollars, plus the additional staff time to run those hybrid meetings. In the arts and science room or the discovery center, it's a little bit different. There's a less robust system in there now. It's, it's a smaller room. It doesn't have any cameras at this time. So we're actually suggesting a different solution there. So the hybrid meetings there would be supported with a single camera and would still be able to be streamed to the website, because meetings, because two of the meetings conflict with council and planning commission meetings. We would not anticipate that those would necessarily be broadcast onto YouTube, but they could still be broadcast onto the website. And we're actually also requesting the same amount of money for that room, even though it's a less robust system. There's actually less infrastructure in that room right now. So to, to bring that up, we're also asking for twenty five thousand dollars towards the solutions in that room. Looking ahead to phase two, so having hybrid meetings in some of the conference rooms, whether that's two sixty-five at the main offices or at the community center or somewhere else, I would be looking at more of a video conferencing type of solution that wouldn't require additional staff. The staff person who's running that meeting should be able to operate on that equipment. It wouldn't have, you know, necessarily movable cameras or, or things of that nature. And there actually was a typo in your packet, and I apologize for that, in the table regarding the proposed solutions. And this should have actually said that we would expect these rooms to be capable, but not expected to broadcast on YouTube. And again, that's because of the conflict of overlapping meetings. But we could have live public comments via Zoom. So that's just kind of a very brief overview. So we are requesting fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds, which the city does believe is eligible. A use for that because it's, it's facilitating hybrid meetings. And so we are looking for your input tonight on a couple of items as well as that appropriation. And I'd be happy to go over the recommendations or answer any questions that you may have.
Hey, thank you. Excellent presentation. Thanks. Any questions for Suzanne? Councilmember Endury.
Well, first Suzanne, thank you for all the work that went into this. This is great and connected to the court. Let me ask, this assumes that for the council, we are live and in Tatsin Hall. So if, if we're there in Tatsin Hall, how do remote participants, which I assume can be residents, consultants, staff, how do they appear to the council? And then my next question is going to be, how do they appear to participants who are sitting in the room?
Sure. So we actually have contemplated that. So as you may recall, and actually for a new council member Quoc, who may also recall, when the council meets in person in that room, there's a large projection screen behind the dais where you would see a PowerPoint presentation. Because that's a little cumbersome to have to turn around to be looking at that, we would be adding basically monitors in the room that would allow the city council, the planning commission, whoever's up on the dais to see what's on the projection screen. So you would see whether that's a slide deck or a person on Zoom who has their camera on. You'd be able to see that feed, and then the audience sitting in the room would be able to see it on the projection screen. Folks participating remotely would see a wide view shot of the room, or if we manipulate or control the cameras, we could, you know, make that a tighter shot of the council or a speaker, kind of depending on the, the pace of the meeting, et cetera. But we would need to provide additional monitors in the room so that you could see who was participating via Zoom.
Okay. And so a participant who is participating from home or her, his office or wherever, what will they see on their screen? Will they see a picture of the council at the dais in one box and then other participants in other boxes? What will they see on, on their screen?
Um, so I think it would depend on what's happening at the time of the meeting. When the council is in open discussion, it would be a wide camera shot of the room. So you'd be able to see everyone up on the dais. If there was a presentation going on that used slides, we would actually, as you saw with Thomas's presentation today, you'd primarily see the slide, and we could have a little picture-in-picture square where you could still see the person who was presenting or talking to you. And then during public comment, or where we were having comments from folks who were participating on Zoom, it would be similar to now, if their camera is on, I would be able to see them. And if they don't have their camera on, there would just be a little Zoom square.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Now my big question. Let's say, just hypothetically, a council member were with his family in Yosemite and wanted to participate in the council meeting. Can that council member participate in the meeting remotely? And this is also a question for Mala, whether that works under either the executive order standard or the Assembly Bill if it's signed.
So maybe Suzanne will give the legal answer.
Yeah.
And, right. So, so I'll say pre-pandemic.
So I'll say, pre-pandemic, if you are in Yosemite or post-pandemic, I'll do pre- and post-pandemic under the traditional Brown Act. If a council member was not in Lafayette and wanted to participate in a meeting, which did happen from time to time, we have to put on the agenda the address of where the council member will be. So if you happen to be staying at Yosemite at Rush Creek Hotel, we would put the address. And so in theory, someone could participate with you at that location. And we would do roll call votes. And you could participate via... And I'll defer to Suzanne about how it will now look. In the past, people would participate via teleconferencing. But that would not... When we go back, I will say, post-pandemic, the bill that's being, you know, will be vetted by the governor and the executive order allow us to do this via Zoom. So if you went to Yosemite now, you could participate via Zoom wherever you are. But you would not be able to do that post-pandemic under the Brown Act without having your address and allowing the public to be wherever you are.
So we go back to the old rule?
You go back to the old rules. The bill that is being considered by the governor is only during a state of emergency. So that's why I'm using this pandemic as kind of the framework. It doesn't allow post-pandemic for this type of Zoom activity for council members.
Right. But it assumes... It includes the possibility that the state of emergency can last until the end of 2023?
Correct. I'm being more optimistic. But yes, if this... And that's why I'm saying pandemic, because it really, it's a state of emergency, not a local emergency. So if the pandemic keeps going on and the governor continues to have a state of emergency, we will be able to utilize this framework that is being discussed.
Okay. So once the state of emergency ends, the public retains their flexibility. Council members lose there, not that any...
That's exactly it.
Too many tears for that.
And the other caveat I want to give you with the bill is it's not just a state of emergency. There has to... There's kind of two prongs to it. It's a state of emergency, and then you need to either have the state or a local entity recommend social distancing requirements, or the council has to make certain findings by a majority vote that the health and safety of the residents participating in the meeting would justify being Zoom, via Zoom. So there's some additional components I just wanted to point out. But you're absolutely right, Councilmember Andori. The public, in this hybrid method, post-pandemic, the public can always participate at home, but the council members are restricted.
Okay. But even under the existing Brown Act, is it still the ability to participate remotely by teleconference or Zoom?
When you said "existing Brown Act," meaning the current executive order?
No, under the...
In the past, pre-pandemic, the law as pre-pandemic written is what I will say.
Yeah. So if it returns to the pre-pandemic Brown Act strictures, a technology has improved since then. So people, generally speaking, weren't using Zoom pre-pandemic.
Right.
So councilmember, this time we'll put the councilmember in Paris, councilmember staying at the Ritz. So the council member on the agenda of the council meeting, it says, Vice Mayor Gueringer, Ritz Hotel.
Sweet, yeah. Sweet 52, so that when other Lafayette residents or any member of the public also happens to be in Paris, they could join her in that room and via Zoom, right? In theory, they could be sitting behind her, next to her, and participating in the meeting in that same way.
Okay. And then the question for Suzanne, does that work technically with this system?
Yes. Technically, what is being proposed would enable a council member to participate remotely in the same way that a consultant or a member of the public would be able to, particularly in meetings that are held in the community hall. We would have that capability. Yeah.
Okay. So again, great work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Gueringer.
Great. Very, very good work. Thank you. Great report. And thank you... I'm getting ready to... My mind just went away to Paris and the Ritz. But the other piece of this in the Brown Act rules is that we still have to have a majority in person in the room, correct? That was the previous Brown...
Right. Majority needs to be within the jurisdiction.
So we can't all go to Paris, but...
You can't all. So three of you could be... Right. Three of you could be, in theory, in your homes in Lafayette with your addresses listed on the agenda.
Oh.
Via Zoom, you know, but then the public can come to your house, right? And participate. And one of you could be in Paris, and one of you could be in Yosemite.
Yeah, that was my understanding on that piece. So thank you. Now, back to sort of the technical piece of it, and this is really in the weeds. But I know that we've had this happen several times about the live streaming on the YouTube and only having the account or ability to just have one of the meetings being livestreamed at that time. And I'm going to take it that's just a function of business accounts or YouTube premiums and/or cost or...
We would need to establish a secondary channel if we wanted to have two concurrent meetings at a time. And would have to have multiple channels if there are multiple concurrent livestreamed meetings. Of course, a meeting that is recorded can be uploaded later and still available for the public to look on YouTube or on our website. But yes, we can only livestream one thing onto our channel, and the city only has one channel currently. We could get additional channels and then have to maintain those and tell the public which channel to look for which thing. That certainly is a possibility.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for the report and all the work.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Dawson.
I guess this... You know, if council is in back at the dais, this is basically assuming that we'll be distanced and, you know, or is that assuming that it's just what it was before? You know, where we're on the dais next to each other? I'm just curious about what council looks like and where the public is coming into.
So the solutions that we have been looking at are contemplating that all of the elected officials are up on the raised stage in the community hall or are in, you know, a U shape down in the other arts and science room. So certainly, the spacing of the chairs is something that could be adjusted. And I think as the health orders evolve, we obviously are mindful of that. I know that the library has done, you know, increased cleaning procedures and such because of COVID. That room is actually open now and rentable and usable. So there certainly are safeguards in place regarding the cleaning of the room, et cetera. And so the layout, of course, could be adjusted as needed. That's not something that I've been looking into too much. I've been focused more on the technical side.
Amazingly so. Yes, thank you. It's interesting because City Manager Shavatsa, I know that you just sent that latest update about proof of vaccination for indoor. So it'll be interesting, I guess, to see what the outcome of the governor's either extension or whatnot. Do we have any idea when... Any update as to that particularly?
As to the governor's action?
Yes.
No. The governor has until October the 10th to sign AB 361 into law. And the minor amendment we are going to make this evening is to urge him to do it before September 30th.
Great. Thank you. Thanks.
September... I'm sorry, Carl, I jumped in. And September 30th is currently... Our October meetings would, under the way that the law, the executive order and everything that's happening, have to go back in person.
If this doesn't go through, right, that's what I understood as well.
Anyway, I'm not going to talk about what's happening outside right now because it's after 8 o'clock, but...
Oh, right. So I have questions. Thank you, Carl, for asking. Those were all the questions I always had in my brain as well. So being kind of nitpicky, looking at the rollout number one, in the little box, it says, under proposed solution for the community hall, it says "live remote public comments via the Zoom audio." I'm hoping that they get video as well.
Yes. So I apologize if that was unclear. So the solution being proposed for the community hall would allow remote participation audio as well as video or screen sharing. So there certainly, many agencies have decided it's a policy not to allow screen sharing during public comments in case of kind of misuse of that platform. But the capability is there. And so certainly, video and screen sharing of staff and consultants who are remotely participating in is anticipated, but actually, public would be able to do audio/video. And if you so chose, like, screen share as well.
Perfect. Perfect.
Which is separated out as a distinction. In that room, it does have the video and screen sharing.
I see. Okay. I get it. Thank you. So the YouTube question, yeah, that's a problem. But if we are intending to still use Zoom... I mean, I know having the livestream is great, but they can always call into Zoom, right? And that's the other...
Yes.
Suzanne, you're frozen. Sorry.
The mayor may be frozen again, but that is correct.
I don't want to presume what her next question was. She'll be back. So any other questions of councilmembers? Councilmember Quoc.
When you... Under those boxes there, you have a check that says, "Stream video to website and YouTube." And I understand the YouTube, but when you say website, I was thinking it was just Zoom. But are you saying it's going to be on the city's website? Or what is meant by the word "stream video to website"?
Yeah. So pre-pandemic, Lafayette did stream audio-only outbound streaming of their meetings to the website via Granicus. So Granicus is a company that we use for a number of services, so including our agenda module and then the meeting archive module. And so the city has previously, and pre-pandemic, was basically making audio files available from these two rooms that are being discussed now, the community hall and the arts and science Discovery Center. So an upgrade in the arts and science room would be to replace the existing Granicus encoder with an encoder that can do audio and video. And actually, prior to the pandemic, like I believe maybe in February, the Granicus encoder in the community hall has been upgraded. However, those meetings weren't yet being video streamed to the website. That was something that staff was working on at that time, but hadn't anticipated the remote participation, which adds another level of complexity and some additional equipment and rerouting of cables and IT. So through Granicus, we can stream onto the website.
As had been done previous to the pandemic.
With audio only.
With audio only. But now it would be going to lovelafayette.org, and the public could see audio and video. And maybe this is just a minor thing, but could you add... Since Mayor Kindal just asked, you know, that people could also watch by Zoom, that's a third option, right? Then they can Zoom, they can go to the city with lovelafayette.org, and they can go to YouTube. Would it be sensible to just put the word Zoom as one of the proposed solutions, just so that we codify it in this document or as we go forward, that that is also what we're talking about? Or is that not what we're talking about?
We most certainly are talking about using Zoom as a teleconferencing platform. Staff in the council and the public are used to that platform. It seems to work very well. It's more intuitive than some other platforms. So certainly, the staff recommendation is to use Zoom specifically as the teleconferencing platform.
Okay. And I'm just asking, is there a reason that we don't... Is it omitted here for a reason? Or is it just like, we could add it here? It's like, the proposed solution includes Zoom, the website, and YouTube?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, we just jumped to council... Did she freeze again? Hello, Mayor?
No.
I think she might have freeze again. So she'll be right back. Wait a second.
So if I may, could I use this time to go over what staff is hoping to hear from you this evening?
Yeah, let's see if she's able to get back. Okay. I think it would be good for her to hear that as well. So I did have a question on the appropriating the... Or I can wait until after what you're looking for from us and then ask that question. Make sure she's not hanging out over in the... Councilmember Andori?
Yeah, let me ask a question. And this, I don't want to... From... Well, I'll just tell you, I'm not intending to discuss this. But I'm hoping that the governor signs the Assembly Bill and that we will continue... Again, this is my hope. We'll continue to meet remotely. And so my question is, Suzanne, could you, if we continue to meet remotely, could you use that time to do more research? Or do you feel that you've got the system that you think will work? And, you know, it's just a matter of putting it in place?
We are still fine-tuning what the solution would be. I was actually, I'm over at the library today for a couple hours. We were doing a demo. A number of cities have actually held a few meetings with maybe just kind of partial in-room attendance to test out the hybrid functionality. So obviously, more time will just help make it a smoother transition. For sure.
So Mayor, we just went through a couple of other questions.
I was able to hear, right?
Oh, good. Okay.
Yes.
I was hoping that was the case. And then you heard that Suzanne, I don't know if you have more questions, but handing the virtual gavel back to you.
Learning again. I have a question, Suzanne, about the estimated cost to implement. The numbers attached here, is this like for a certain period or just for implementation? Will there be other costs? Obviously, for staff time ongoing. But any other ongoing costs that we should be accommodating or thinking of?
Yes. So the $50,000 being requested now would be to basically make the upgrades in those two rooms. So, you know, buying new or replacing or upgrading existing equipment, doing some additional, you know, cable runs and other improvements to those two rooms. And there would be additional ongoing expenses. We're already currently paying a certain fee for Granicus technology to upgrade in the second room, the arts and science room. That'll increase slightly. There would be the staff cost of additional time in setting up each of the rooms and then running this system in the main hall. Auto captioning service when meetings are being broadcast would be an ongoing... Um, auto captioning service uh when meetings are being uh broadcast would be an ongoing fee. And then uh this fifty thousand dollars uh doesn't uh include the equipment uh for phase two rooms, which um basically take a very different approach. Um, and those would actually vary between probably five hundred to five thousand dollars um per each of those conference rooms, depending on uh where we uh land on that. So it's um, they're kind of just uh apples and oranges for the two different types of rooms. And so we separated those out, but so we would be coming back to you um in the future, but this would be the allocation. So we could go ahead and purchase that equipment, get it installed, get it tested, make sure everyone's comfortable with it, et cetera.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you, everybody. Any other questions? No, all right, let's go to public comment.
There is uh one public comment or one hand raised uh right now, so I'll bring uh David Clark in.
Hi, I I like this concept. I belong to a a group. We had an annual meeting this summer with four hundred people, and a hundred of them were offsite. And uh it turns out, this is just anecdotally, it turns out, we tried to do the the Zoom meetings in and out. And it actually increased the total cost of the the meeting cost of the group because we were using, having to use hotel rooms, spent hotel rooms to set up offsite meetings, and and they charged an arm and a leg. But anyway, I like the idea. But I have a question, and I realize this is a a time for public comment. So I'll ask my question. I'll turn around, phrase it into a comment. If the governor does not sign this extension and the Assembly Bill does not go through. Uh, my question is, how do we justify using ARPA funds if neither of those things happens? Um, and and that, I'm I'm assuming the bucket that this is coming out of is the first one that Mr. Myers listed, which is responding to the public health emergency. So um my statement is, it looks to me like there's a problem with using ARPA funds for this expenditure if those two things don't happen. And if they do happen, are you going to have to revisit this every three, five, six months, or whatever it is uh with the same question? I mean, my observation is, maybe, how much is it, fifty or thirty? Maybe it makes sense to just take this out of the general fund and don't even mess around with ARPA. But um, that's that's my comment. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If anyone else would like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. I do not see any other hands raised.
Great, thank you. So close public comment. So my understanding, to kind of answer David's question, my understanding is that um this fifty thousand dollars is whether we go back personally or not, it will allow the public to be remote. So e- we could have all of us council members there, or even in our houses um if we wanted to go there, but um but we would allow the public to be remote, and that's important to like, especially if this bill doesn't go through, then nobody has to show up except for us, or at least, you know, one or two of us. So, yeah, so I that, to me, it seems, and I think that's independent of the ARPA funds. So I don't think it matters if it's general fund or ARPA funds, it just happens to be, we have the ARPA funds, we can use it, so mi- might as well use that bucket for now, because it is appropriate. And uh and this cause is good. So anyways, so any other comments or questions for Suzanne? I vice my Ganger.
I just actually wanted to clarify again, and this is a question for Mala. So Mala, if we go back in person a- as a council, did you say that two of us could be at our houses in Lafayette, but three have to physically be in the building, or we all can be at our houses the way we have been? Because that's not the way that it would have been in the before times, right? So.
In in theory, in the before times, a a quorum of you have to be in the jurisdiction. Um, and so have to be in the city of Lafayette. But obviously, we'd have our meetings in person, but in theory, if you all wanted to be at your houses, we'd have to agendize your address. Um, the other, the other thing I was thinking about is if we didn't have a a public facility location like we traditionally met at, there may be, and and I know we've been talking a lot of ADA issues in another context, there may be some ADA issues depending on how accessible your homes are, if we didn't, didn't have a building that was accessible. So there are some, I I know we're not going there, but in theory, we we could have everyone at their houses on Zoom that that made it open and available to the public to attend.
Because it's it's in the jurisdiction. I just wanted, yeah, to make sure that everyone, including myself, was clear on that.
And I think some, you know, in talking to some of my colleagues, I think some um maybe more special districts are even considering that as an option, thinking that members of the public will still just attend via Zoom if the bill doesn't pass and the executive order lapses.
Right. Sounds great. All right, so any other comments about the proposals or? Vice Mayor Ganger.
I think that Suzanne was going to um um lead us through uh what she's, what staff is hoping to get.
Sounds great. Thank you. Please do.
Uh, thank you both. Um, so uh staff tonight is looking for directions from you on a couple of items. Um, so we're looking for your uh direction for us to pursue hybrid meeting solutions for uh the city council, planning commission, design review commission, and transportation and circu- circulation commission now as phase one. We're looking for the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars towards that end. Uh, we're looking for your direction regarding other advisory bodies, and if you would like us um to continue researching costs and options for um hybrid meetings for those advisory bodies. Giving us that direction, and we can return to you with uh specific recommendations at a future meeting. And then we're also um maybe just looking for some general direction um um about if we needed to, if we were pursuing hybrid meetings, developing a policy regarding um if there were technical problems and the meeting couldn't be um continued online. Um, but it was a hybrid meeting, um would that online meeting be auxiliary and the in-person meeting continues, or does the whole meeting have to cease, or kind of what? You know, what would the parameters be? And obviously, that's something to work with Mala on as well, but if you had any other um input or direction on that now, that would help us um start working towards that. So those are the items we're looking for your input on.
Great, so um, so the first two seem pretty straightforward. And then the other two, we should have some discussion about um ideas. So um so, does somebody want to start? All right, Councilmember Andori.
Well, as you point out, the first two are pretty straightforward, so I'll move adoption of staff recommendations, one and two.
Okay, second.
Sounds great. Do we have any discussion about those? Questions, discussion? All right, so when we go forward with the vote on that one, so Vice Mayor Ganger.
Aye.
Councilmember Andori.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Quack?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So items one and two are, and I thank you very much for putting all that together. Um, so now you provide the staff with a direction regarding other advisory body meetings. And and this, I'm assuming means to look at the other rooms and the other, you know, meeting forums, um kind of the phase two rollout. Um, okay. Great, so the phase two rollout, to me, seemed um very reasonable. Um, the the ones that you laid out in your um in the proposal here, in your uh staff report. So I was just gonna ask, so this is basically um like the other commissions outside of the first phase commissions. Um, and these conference rooms, as as we assume in the past, they've used those conference rooms, so it would be going forward using the same conference rooms. Okay. So as I'm seeing on the page six, you've got regular meetings that coincide, and so various rooms at the community center. What um, what other rooms do we ever really use at the community center?
I'm gonna, I'll jump in and then again, because Suzanne's kind of new. So there are times when we have meetings at the um Jennifer Russell Building. Um, I believe they use the Alder Room sometimes. Uh, there are times, maybe, there there's a lot of rooms there. Um, so seniors, I believe, meet. Is that the Alder Room that they're in? Uh, um, there may be times when they're in that, um, can't pull the name of it right now. The choir room, so they actually move around. I think that Suzanne may be looking potentially at um equipment that may potentially be movable, right? So it wouldn't necessarily mean that we would have to outfit every room. Um, if we get, right, Suzanne, if we get equipment that's movable, like a camera on a tripod. Oh, Jonathan, yes, boy, and Alder. Um, and so we could potentially use that. It it would be more difficult in the bigger rooms, for example, in the JRB, because it's a bigger room, there would be um, you know, issues of of miking, right? Because just one mic may not pick things up. So those are things that I think we're gonna have to really work on, and that's why it's phase two. Um, there's the police, I think we mentioned, I think there's meetings at the police station sometimes. Uh, we have meetings um in our big room in room two forty at city offices. That's not a room that we own, that's a room that we share. So again, we might have to use um movable equipment. So there there are some challenges, and we have, as you know, quite a lot of those smaller commissions and and meetings. Um, so, does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Ganger.
I didn't know Carl had his hand up.
I I didn't, you both were.
I turned my, I turned, I turned, I unmuted my mic. Um, so I think it, I think that it will be great to look at uh phase two solutions and to look at the other uh commissions and the rooms for them. I think that um the Jennifer Russell, you know, for when we have big meetings out there, that will be something down the road we're going to have to have to consider. Um, one of the things, and I think I've mentioned it um is the different commission, and I think you say something about it too, Suzanne, that some of the commissions record now that we have Zoom. I don't know that we did record in the, you know, before um in those meetings, but having sort of a set policy around um how all of the commission meetings either have audio recording. So policy implications as we move forward with this as well, I think will be uh useful to have, but I, you know, fully support um you continuing to do all this great work and and coming back back to us with that and looking at all the different options.
Uh, Councilmember Andori.
Okay, so there's one group that's never met in person. Uh, because they were formed during the pandemic, and that's GPAC. And so where will uh GPAC meet? And I just raised that as a question, because I think where we're going here is just giving direction to Suzanne and and Tracy to think about the different groups and come back. Uh, because it it may be that some groups don't meet in their traditional meeting place. If we set up particular rooms, maybe one at the community center, one at the city offices, and so we just arrange things that they go in those rooms, but I I I I don't know what more we can do tonight, other than say that let's move forward and figuring out a way to to do this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Quack?
Um, so I'm in support of item three, which is that we have multiple phases. Let's bite off even what you've described. You did a wonderful job to scope the first most important steps, that it's not trivial and it's not easy to do that, and I'm sure you're gonna do a lot of learning getting that done, which will help with uh uh figure out phase two. So I like that you have a phased approach and am supportive of number three. And number four, I'm very glad that you point out that this is not just a technical issue, but it's a policy and procedure issue as well, and that um we need both in order to deploy uh correctly when the time comes. So uh I'm I'm really uh pleased that you've um put this all together and that you've staged it as you've done.
All right, thank you. Yes, I I I also agree with um with Carl and Teresa saying, yes, let's let's push forward. Um, for sure, the one room that we own in the city offices, you know, definitely. And then, you know, a mobile solution that may handle a bunch of different characters, it's definitely keep looking into those options. The Jennifer Russell Building or the Veterans Hall, I'm like, gosh, you know, well, those are gonna be they just may be in person, you know, we might get, you know, that may be a policy decision, we just can't possibly overcome the technical difficulties um and hope the COVID actually goes away someday. Um, and I going with the, which I brought up, number four, um, the technical problems to prevent remote participation. Yeah, that's that's an issue, and I I think that it, you know, if, as long as there's one way that they can get in. You know, it seems like we should forge on with a meeting, but if if there's, if they can't, people are remote and they rely on that these days, and they can't, then to me, it's, it does seem reasonable that we do think about, you know. I know today, if our Zoom wasn't working, we would cancel. I mean, there's just no way that we would, could could possibly go forward. And so I I do, I think that that's gonna have to be if people can't come in and they rely on it, and this is something that they adopt, that we just kind of have to recancel, unfortunately, but. All right, Councilwoman Dawson.
I, um, Suzanne mentioned earlier, like the fallback of, you know, if we are in person. Um, there is that, what we had in the past, that open body, and you either were able to make it there in person or not. Um, and did we have any kind of call-in mechanism at that point? Just, we didn't. So i- is that something we could? You know, if there's, if there's not a a technical Zoom, you know, connection, a person can't provide comment that way. Could we have like an email and read comment type of thing? I thought we had that before, maybe I'm mistaken. Okay. But I'm just saying, as a backup, as as opposed to them not having an opportunity to do a public comment at all. Um, if we are there at the DIA, as it seems to be, there should be a way that they can contact us during public comment period.
Vice Mayor Ganger.
So when I was on item number four, um asking staff, and again, it's creating more work, but to come back with some best practices, because I was starting to nod my head that we could call in, but that's other bodies that I've either served on or um in my day job. So the county has set up a a call-in, a Zoom, so that there's a sort of fault tolerant, you know, backup systems in that. And so I think it would be sort of looking at what the best practices are. And I'm sorry if that's mine making noise, but um what the, what the best practices are in coming back on number four, but definitely appreciate bringing it up as a po- a policy consideration.
All right. Any more questions, concerns? All right, so do we have some emotion to create, or we just, is that enough direction? Have we given you enough direction tonight and not have to vote? Okay, great. That is wonderful.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you. I'm excited. This is really a great opportunity for our city. I I, this is so great. And and thank you for the ARPA funds to make it not feel so, quite so painful. Because we would want to do it anyway, so, great idea.
And and my point out, this is also great for any organization in the community that wants to rent the community hall. And for functions.
Oh, very much so, right? We could rent it out and make, no kidding.
The Library Foundation, yeah.
Of course, of course. All right, well, thank you.
And I'm inspired to call in from uh Yosemite right here.
All right, so let's go to item nine D, Chief Ben Eldredge, oh Lieutenant. No, no. Chief of Police. He has a new title, right? Still Lieutenant, okay. It's still Lieutenant, right, yeah.
Sorry, I'll still be in the, hi everyone, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
So good. So yes, I am a Lieutenant of the Sheriff's Office. And as your chief, I get the cool title of Chief of Police. Thank you for that. But anyhow, so tonight we are proposing uh, a contract for code enforcement services. Uh, I believe all you probably have had a chance to review the staff report, talking about the history of code enforcement in the city of Lafayette. Uh, prior to coming to the Police Department in 2017, uh, and you're probably add in on this, it was very much sort of as needed basis. And had lived within the planning department, which is common for most cities. Uh, Chief Eric Christensen, prior to my time, had proposed bringing over code enforcement to the Police Department, uh, after the departure of an employee in the Planning Department. And um, during my time, I came over in March of 2018. Uh, I felt that code enforcement to Police Department was very challenging, uh, especially as the need for, or excuse me, the, the increase for calls for service uh, came up. And also the technical skills needed to effectively uh, do code enforcement. Uh, my staff report calls out that um, both our Planning and Public Works Department uh, currently still handle components of code enforcement. That is because it does require a level of expertise that within the model we uh, had with, at the Police Department, the expertise didn't exist. It was typically retired, a law enforcement officer or reserve officer who a- as expected, did not have engineering or planning background to address uh, a lot of code enforcement issues that come up in our community. And I think uh, with the increase in building in our city, as y'all know, that, that need has only increased. And so um, just to summarize, we, Tom Gill, uh, a Reserve Deputy of the Sheriff's Office, a very long-serving Reserve Deputy, who had a very long career in telecommunications while being a Reserve Deputy and then retiring and continued to do that and then working for the city of Lafayette. Did a great job, worked nineteen hours a week, and also spent a lot of his off time doing code enforcement. But uh, over the last several months, we've identified that um, the need for uh, quality code enforcement, the level of service that is expected of our community has only increased. And, and so looking at a long-term solution after Tom Gill retired and identifying that not a whole lot of people wanna do this job, um, which I get. I quote enforcement as a job not similar to law enforcement in that when you contact somebody, you're telling them you did, you did something wrong. Whether it's like trash cans out, or you have a lot line issue, or an A D U issue, or a sidewalk issue, you're essentially enforcing an element of the law, if you will, or the ordinance. And it is a very challenging job to do day in and day out. Um, and so with the retirement of Tom Gill, uh, we realized there was gonna be a challenge to staff that going forward. And uh, we were fortunate to have Andy Comley, who's a long-term resident of Lafayette, uh, who has been Reserve Deputy for very long and was willing to fill in. He oversaw our tobacco ordinance implementation and getting licensing and had a, a small background in code enforcement and was willing to fill the gap while we looked for a long-term solution. Uh, during that time, uh, Andy has provided very high-quality services, uh, but frankly, has no desire to do this as a career. Uh, but he's done a good job of filling in for us while we looked for a solution. Um, and part of that was realizing that our level of service and the number of calls required uh, more attention. And Andy has spent probably thirty to thirty-five hours a week addressing code enforcement issues and trying to address them as effectively as possible. Also noting that Public Works and Planning are still handling code enforcement. So we looked for a long-term solution. Uh, there's really two options ahead of us, is do we contract this service or do we hire a full-time employee? Uh, from the staff report, you can note that hiring a full-time internal employee would likely, or is cheaper in the long run. And that is something that both myself, Tracy, and Arup have noted. Uh, but we've also identified that it's gonna take some time to uh, advertise, locate, and hire the proper employee to staff code enforcement full-time, having both a planning, public works, and just a general code enforcement background. Um, and so we looked at outsourcing this service for a period of time. Uh, whether it be six months or the city, after a six-month contract, would identify that we wanna do this long-term. Um, but by hiring a company that provides the service to other municipalities, who has expertise both within the code enforcement officer position, and also within, within the management position, uh, we put out for RFPs, uh, there are several companies that provide this service. And uh, from the staff report, identified that Four Leaf offered this service at a lower cost than the other RFP that was offered up. And so we engaged in conversation with them. Um, in the packet that was submitted, you can see the uh, resume of Pete Roque. He was the manager of Four Leaf's Code Enforcement Unit. Um, I will say this, and, and credit to the other two companies I reached out to, that they both uh, uh, endorsed the fact that Four Leaf had hired Pete. He's a well-known expert nationally within code enforcement. Uh, additionally, uh, the, whether it is the initial resume that I submitted to you, or excuse me, the the first resume I received, and then the additional employee they offered up. And then for, fast forwarding to Sean, Sean's resume that I forwarded to you today, every employee they've offered up is highly qualified. Uh, both uh, formal education and experience. And so uh, to support Four Leaf, um, and then the quality employee they provide, every resume I have reviewed has been um, spectacular as it comes to code enforcement, especially considering how we've operated code enforcement within the city of Lafayette. Um, there's a recognition that um, as our city grows and diversifies, uh, both uh, buildings and, and influx of housing within commercial, the need for code enforcement is only going to increase. And so tonight, uh, I am proposing that we engage in a form, uh, support the city manager engaging in a six-month contract with Four Leaf. The benefit is that uh, one, it will allow us the time uh, to assess whether we wanna outsource this service or bring it internal. Uh, two, uh, we're hiring a company that has expertise in this. And whether we just use them for six months and then go internal after review. But get us set on the best path forward, best practices, if you will, in code enforcement. I think it'll be a great asset to us moving forward. If we, after six months, decide to go internal, getting us set up for success. Um, the best statement I can offer to you when Tom Gill's getting ready to retire is I apologize to him uh, as his chief or manager, um, when he had complex issues, that was not my wheelhouse. Um, and I had very little time to engage and really develop and learn myself, and that increased challenges. I would say eighty percent of our calls for service get resolved with the, hi, how are you? Can we fix this? Uh, but you have the twenty or thirty percent that require expertise. Whether it's identifying the sidewalk needs to be replaced, and that comes at a high cost. Whether it's a lot line needs to be moved, or a fence line needs removed, again, comes at a high cost. And you wanna have expertise involved in that before the city involves, gets involved in litigation and/or enforcement of that. Um, the model at the Police Department was not set up to take care of that. And that's why we utilized Planning and Public Works to do that. Um, and I will tell you respectfully, um, sort of as an inside-outside guy, as a contract employee, if you will, um, your planning and public works managers have their hands full. And so managing uh, code enforcement effectively is, is a challenge within our small staff. But I think there is an option for us to re-envision that, whether it lives at the PD or, or Planning or Public Works in the future. But by hiring an outside company who is experts in this field will benefit us in uh, whether, if you're bringing it internal, to be better prepared to manage that going forward and making sure we hire the best employee possible, again, if it's internal. Uh, I do, I recognize that the cost of a six-month contract is high. Uh, again, we're paying for the overhead costs that come with the external company. And I definitely am respectful of that. In the spirit of that, uh, both the city manager and I will be uh, reviewing the performance of that code enforcement officer. First off, starting with a interview, if you will, or review of that employee, making sure they're the right fit for us. One of the first things I told Four Leaf and, and CSG was, our first response in Lafayette is, let's see if we can get cooperation. Uh, we're not looking to just cite everybody the first time we get a notice of violation. Let's work with our employees, let's try to get a, a resolution. But also identifying if we don't, we need to have a process that's clearly established so that we can get a, a resolution if it has to go via administrative fines, et cetera. And so um, both companies, Four Leaf and CSG, recognize that they, they are happy to work within the framework of expectations that we have in our city, that it's not just the city government, you know, hey, the first time we contact you is via uh, 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 mail or uh, some other type of formal uh, response. Let's, let's try the first, let's engage with you via telephone, email, in-person. And let's keep that Lafayette spirit of let's just all work together. And so um, Four Leaf and CSG were both happy to do that. They recognize that each city is unique and they're happy to work within our framework. That'll be part of the first month or two of learning how we handle business while also uh, assisting us in reviewing our municipal code and our procedures and giving us best practices moving forward. So I'm open to any questions.
Hey, thank you. Wonderful uh, presentation.
Thank you.
All right, any, any questions? Uh, Councilmember Dawson?
Thank you, um, Chief Eldredge, very much for uh, this great report and for the additional information that you provided. Um, I do appreciate that. Um, I had a question about the project manager, um, speaking of like, would, would Four Leaf also allow, working with them, allow that best practice kind of scenario bringing to us? Um, and maybe help facilitate, uh, what's a good way to explain, like a smoother operation or, or um, management of COE? Do you, do you see that as part of this function?
It is. So I'll give you a little preview. It's, it's tied into this, but it's not a separate agendized item, so I won't go in depth. Um, how the city has received code enforcement complaints has varied over the years. Um, and in the next, I would say, four weeks, the city will be launching officially a citywide app, app available on Apple and Android that will allow you to access, a, access a lot of very, uh, uh, a variety of city services, including code enforcement, public works, planning, parks and rec, the Police Department, emergency preparedness, links for a radio station. And so I, I would encourage councilmembers to look on the App Store and download My Lafayette. We have not officially launched. Yes. We not, we have not officially launched it. Uh, we're still populating some of the icons. Uh, but one of the goals was uh, for more effective management of code enforcement and public works requests. So that you don't always have to go to the city website to locate a T A R or a public course request or code enforcement request, which on your, your mobile device is more challenging, as you know, when going to, to public websites, uh, via your laptop or desktop computer. Uh, this will allow, there's so many cool features coming with this, and it was a service that the city is already paying for. So there's no increased cost to the city. We're basically taking advantage of an existing service and we're gonna blow it through the roof. Uh, so I'm really excited because it has a lot of implications for code enforcement. If you download My Lafayette tonight, you'll see that you have a direct link to Zone Haven, to the Wildfire Cameras, to the Emergency Preparedness Guide, to our AM radio station. And all of our department heads are working together over the next several weeks to add several other options on that app. Again, options for parks and recs to make it easier to sign up for different programs. Uh, Planning and Public Works to accept uh, work requests or questions via the app. So, I always shouldn't be saying this on a, we're not quite ready, but we're getting really close. But the benefit is code enforcement going into the future will be managed via this app. Public Works already does this on the backside of the application. And so if we were to contract for a com- with a company for the next six months, the data and the cases they're tracking will be entered into this app. And this will be our data. So if you don't extend the six-month tracker, uh, contract, excuse me, it is still our data. And this data within the app is eas- more easily shared within departments. So right now, with Planning wants to get data on code enforcement, they basically email Andy and ask for his Excel sheet, which is very old-fashioned. Um, and so sharing of information will, will be eased between departments, which I'm very excited about. And I know that Arup's excited about all the different options. Uh, the app is a living app, and so we can change over time. Uh, Suzanne can share roundup and other publications via this app. So you don't only have to go to the website or sign up for a subscription, you can also utilize the app to access a lot of city features. And so really excited about that. Uh, so it is active, but we're not actually advertising because we're still uh, adding features to it over the next couple of weeks. So uh, to that point, um, if we do contract, the data that is received will be our data. Um, is not Four Leaf's data or anybody other company's data, it's our data. And in fact, if uh, one of the things we're doing is uploading all of our Excel sheets on code enforcement over the last several years into the GoGov app or My Love, My Lafayette app. So there's a, a, a citizen side, and there's the department head or department side of the end user side. So I'm really excited. I know Jeff Hayman and I had discussed launching a city app about two and a half years ago before P S P S and COVID hit, and it got sort of sidelined. So really excited about having a really high-quality uh, city of Lafayette app, similar to neighboring cities like Danville and Brentwood, uh, for you just to check out some other examples. So.
It looks great so far.
Good.
Yeah, it's pretty nice. Congratulations.
It is a work in progress and, and I will say credit to John Cornell. Uh, he is doing the, he's doing the IT. Well, he's doing the IT side of it in, in, in partnership with our department heads. So, thank you.
Yes. All right, any other questions? Uh, Councilor Clark.
Uh, this may be a question for Narup or Ben, uh, but is the code enforcement position, does it create any revenue for the city? Uh, for budgeting purposes, do you forecast any revenue which would offset the costs?
No. Um, when, if we were to move forward on a violation to the point where it requires us putting a lien on a property, it's typically, typically because we've already done the work on the property. For example, you're not fixing the sidewalk. We deem that it is such a dire need that we actually fix the sidewalk and then we put a lien on the property. It's similar for other code enforcement issues, but i- in and of itself, it does not generate any income.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just wanted to confirm, uh, confirm that.
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Dawson?
I just wanted to follow up on, on um, my line of questioning and, and thank you again for that data you did. It was kind of interesting, the um, the call, the case open relative to the um, amount of interaction. It's uh, pretty deep, it seems. Um, will GoGov and the new My Lafayette app, will that be able to in the future break out the different um, requests that are coming in so we could see that detail?
Yeah, I think one, if we identify that we have code enforcement full-time, things that would have been routed to Planning or Public Works would be routed to code enforcement and tracked properly there. Again, currently um, code enforcement as we have it does not have the expertise to handle some of those specialities that Planning and Public Works can. They have the education and the background to do so. So, yes, I would expect that. Um, Public Works, again, already uses the GoDev app to track their internal cases. Whether the case is open, the case is closed, sending updates to the resident. Uh, this app offers a lot of opportunities of increased public service, quality of service that really only exists within Public Works currently. And so bringing that to other departments, specifically code enforcement, will be a benefit. Um, and so yes, um, if we hire full-time, whether it's internal or external, all code enforcement calls will be routed to one location and be easier to track. All code enforcement calls be routed to one location and be easier to track into future years.
And it is really, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I think we're talking a lot about the app, which is not on the agenda. So I I'm guessing at some point, maybe the chief will uh roll out a demo.
I apologize.
Or not. Yeah, that's probably me. I just was trying to figure out um.
I brought it up, so I apologize.
It's great, though. Um, so then the the um. The proposed contract COE would it would be, they're probably familiar with this type of app and would be primarily working with that.
Correct. Uh, one of the things that Narup and I and Tracy confirmed with Four Leaf uh during our meeting. Uh, was the onboarding of Go Gov and Pete Roque uh has on boarded several cities with this application. Uh, and in fact, the current price repay is substantially lower than a lot of cities because we signed up many years ago. To use it, utilize it for other features. Uh, but yes, they're very familiar with that and it it is an app that they're comfortable with. And again, the data they input into that will be shared or can be shared within other departments within the city.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great. I have a um a question. So um, I know right now when the code enforcement guys come in, they're, you know, they're in uniform. You know, how how will they be presented when they show up and meet people?
So, good point. Um, I would say uh or last year, we did have uh two different complaints or concerns come in from residents, if you will, about the fact that code enforcement was being represented as a arm of the police department. So one of the benefits of this contract is they're represented as a city of Lafayette employee. So they would wear a city of Lafayette uh polo, have a city of Lafayette business card, have a city of Lafayette email address, and if they responded to a site, would be driving a city of Lafayette vehicle. Which is a white vehicle with the city of Lafayette logo on the side. Uh, so I think there's some value to um. I think there's arguments made both sides, right? But I think in the spirit of a lot of things you've been dealing with over the last year and a half. Uh, disassociating code enforcement with strictly law enforcement uh does have some benefits. Um, and so that's definitely uh would be a part of this contract and or uh after the contract, if we go internal reviewing how we want that to live onward within the city.
Perfect. Um, next one, um, will the, will they be willing to go in the wee hours of the morning um for noise? Uh, issues? What are their hours? So like they'd be flexible for things like that?
So that will still fall to a degree to your police department, which is similar to a lot of the cities that Sergeant Hackers did a review of in the staff report. Uh, similar to another contract city with the sheriff's office is Danville. And and code enforcement is typically eight to five, give or take. Uh, I'm sure there's some nuances where we could ask for a one-off scenario. Uh, but it is recognized that there are a few things within code enforcement. This includes not only in the city of Lafayette and other police departments both, but also in the sheriff's office. You get a noise complaint at three AM in the morning, we're not going to call code enforcement in. Uh, one. Arguably, you probably want the guys with authority going in at three AM in the morning. Uh, typically setting a normal party, if you will. Um, and so there there will still be a cooperation with code enforcement and law enforcement. If you have a tree being cut down. And it's identified this is a tree that should not be cut down, law enforcement will step in and and have a stop order pending review. Uh, I would say noise ordinance is probably the biggest one that comes up in those off hours. And I think uh, I will just add a side note that Mala and Rupe and I are still talking about potential options for noise ordinances. And that's one of the discussions we had with Four Leaf. If they come on board, um, we've had some challenges with noise ordinances and bringing their expertise to bear. And maybe not make it a noise ordinance issue versus a loading and unloading issue might be a more appropriate route for the city council to review in the future. So again, taking advantage of the expertise that comes with Four Leaf that I I don't have. That we don't currently have in the city. Um, again, identifying this is not a cheap contract for six months, but I think there's a lot of things we can glean from it. Uh, to better how we approach code enforcement going into the future as our city grows and diversifies.
Great, thank you. Uh, are any more questions? All right, let's go to public comment.
And Mayor Kindel, if I can just add on, one of the, one of the goals of uh myself being the manager of the contract in partnership with Greg. Uh, Mike, and of course, our city manager was, is that there needs to be a cooperation between the police department and code enforcement, identifying those off hour issues. So that's why I'd be the manager of the contract for the six month period.
Perfect.
If any members of the public would like to make a comment on this item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Great, thank you. Close public comment. So um. All right, anybody have any other questions, concerns, or ideas moving forward?
No other questions or concerns. I'm um, thank you for the, you know, very detailed report. I appreciate that. Um, in addition to getting the code enforcement person to Councilmember Dawson's point, we're getting um also that expertise and some best practices and, you know, looking at how to um do this program going forward. Um, obviously got everybody excited about the app and sorry you lost us for a few minutes, Chief. But um, I'm unless there's other discussion, I'm ready to make a a motion.
Do we have any other discussion? I'm I'm in agreement with Teresa.
So I will move that we authorize the city manager to sign a six month contract with Four Leaf Inc. To provide code enforcement services for the city of Lafayette.
I second the motion.
Sounds great. Any discussion?
I uh, City Manager Shabatson, just a question. Um. So are we uh during the six months still have a um active search for a full time person? Are we going to see after the pilot, basically, which route we're going?
That's a great question. Thank you, Councilmember Dawson. As you know, we uh we've hired management partners to do an assessment of staffing and resources. And that study is underway. So uh, we hope to get some direction and recommendations from the consultant on staffing code enforcement as well as testing out a contract service and to see whether it should remain a contract or it should be brought in house.
Thank you. All right, so a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, let's see. Vice Mayor Guerger.
I.
Councilmember Dury?
I.
Councilmember Dawson?
I.
Uh, Councilmember Qua?
I.
And I'm also an I. All right, congratulations. Good luck. I hope we, I I think that's a great partnership. It's a good idea and I hope we learn a lot. All right, Vice Mayor Guerger.
And I just wanted to say thank you also. I meant to say this earlier to um Andy and to Tom. Um, you know, for all the work that that they have done and um, thank you for um providing that additional information today as well, Chief.
Thank you. Thank for your time. I appreciate it.
Great. Okay, so we'll go on to item ten B. With our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Before you is a request to approve the sale of Lafayette Mercantile to site centers. I think we all know Steve Cortese, who has been a a partner to the city since the mid nineties. He owns both La Fiesta Square and Lafayette Mercantile. And when Lafayette Mercantile was uh was planned. That block contained two gas stations that had to be remediated and Steve did that and uh built the project that is really one of our finer developments in Lafayette. Um, when we, when that happened, we had a redevelopment agency and we entered in it into an agreement with Steve. Uh, wherein the agency uh agreed to uh pay Steve uh and his company money in exchange for certain requirements in an agreement called the owner participation agree agreement. One of the conditions of that agreement is that for twenty years after the certificate of completion, which took place in two thousand and seven. That any sale of the property would need the the city's approval. The city's uh authority to uh regulate or or to comment and opine and approve the sale is limited. And I just want to read it for the record that um the the agency, the city re- reserves the right to reasonably approve the sale. And in determining whether to approve such a sale. The agency shall evaluate the financial ability of the proposed transferee to own and operate the project. To meet the owner's obligations under this agreement. And also the evaluation of the fitness and experience of the transferee and its se- uh senior management. The the buyers are uh is a, the buyer is a company called Site Centers. It's a publicly traded company headquartered in Ohio. Site Centers owns numerous shopping centers and retail centers throughout the coun- uh throughout the country. Including uh a few in the Bay Area. Uh, the review of the executive leadership team indicates that they do have extensive experience dealing with retail and commercial centers. They are aware of the owner participation agreement. And know of the terms contained in this agreement. As such, um, staff is recommending that the city council approve the sale of Lafayette Mercantile to site centers. Uh, Steve Cortese is present this evening. And he said he would be, he is available to answer any questions you might have. As.
All right, thank you. All right, um, any questions for Narup? Councilmember Dury?
I'll just ask as a matter of due diligence, have are you or anyone on the staff done any independent um due diligence or investigation with respect to the buyer and its financial and management? Expertise, financial strength and management expertise?
Councilmember Enduri, what I have done is uh I have looked at their website. I have looked at several uh sites with references to site center. I've searched for reviews. I've searched for Better Business Bureau comments. That has been the extent of my assessment. I have not reached out to individuals to ask them about site centers.
We're just on questions for uh Narup, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so um.
I I do want to say that I have um in in during the due diligence phase, Steve did uh reach out to Greg Wolf and me, and we had a meeting with the potential buyers. And they asked us many questions about La Fiesta and what the city wanted and what the future plans were. And we shared that with them. I forgot to mention.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, did you uh, did you mention La Fiesta just now or you're talking about?
My my error, Lafayette Mercantile. The site centers is purchasing both Lafayette Mercantile as well as Lafayette, La Fiesta. So they had specific questions for both sen- of both centers. And also were interested to know uh the relationship between the current owner and the city. And what the city's views or plans for for the downtown and these developments were.
And and when abouts did that meeting take place? Was it this year?
Yes, I would say about uh three months ago.
Okay, thank you.
So uh, Councilmember Dury?
Yeah, I realize this is more appropriate for comments, but since Narup mentioned the relationship between the owner and the city, I might just say that we have been extremely fortunate to have Steve Cortese as the uh owner and developer uh of uh Lafayette Mercantile. Uh, he's been the ideal um developer landlord curator of tenants. Uh, he's just been fantastic for the city, so. I'm sorry to see these properties going to someone else. Uh, when I asked the question about the buyer. Knowing Steve, I don't think he would leave us in uh with a successor that that wouldn't be top notch, so. Uh, I'll just, and I didn't realize he was going to be on this tonight, so I'm just saying it anyway. Very fortunate to have him as the uh in the city.
Great, thank you. All right, yeah, I see Steve on. All right. Uh, are we going to bring Steve on as a part of this conversation or as a?
If you only if you, he's here only to answer questions if you.
Super. I think that's good.
Yeah.
All right, um, hey. Hello, Steve.
Hello.
Uh, yes, and thank you just to um. Further emphasize what Carl said about thank you for everything you've done for the city of Lafayette and I, and we are, I know the bar is really high. And we probably won't reach that again, but um hoping we can. Um, do you by any chance, my question is like, what kind of retail centers does site have that are similar, you know, to what you've you've done here for us in Lafayette?
Good question. No, they are uh a national concern. So they have centers around the country. And from my due diligence, their centers sort of cater to their demographic. Right? I mean, you, for instance, you can't take La Fiesta Square and Lafayette Mercantile and plunk them down anywhere, right? There's a, there's a special demographic that Lafayette has that allowed me to do those. So they have centers that are more of a lifestyle kinds that let's say we have. And then they have some that are more of strippy, you know, or maybe power center. Um. Uh, you know, but they, so they have the full gamut. Um. Uh, but they, you know, so but they do understand the business. There's just no question. Um. Uh, I was listening to Narup's comment about her due diligence. I imagine that Narup also looked at their financials. If she hadn't, uh, I certainly did. Um, because they're public. You can get online and and look at them and um, it's, it would be easy to imagine their financial capability is a little bit larger than mine. Thing that I'm a local. I I I'll just say also, you know. It has been a phenomenal partnership for my company. You you know, back in ninety six, when we purchased uh La Fiesta Square. And then in two thousand and one, when we purchased the first piece of land for Lafayette Mercantile. We ultimately bought the second and then broke ground in oh five. But um. You know, I I'm also very grateful because the city of Lafayette uh trusted us to 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 do those two projects and and especially after La Fiesta Square. Lafayette Mercantile was a more difficult project. Um, and was not easy. And so the city really, we had to partner to figure that out. And it turned out to be a wonderful project that I'm very proud of, but truly the city was my partner and and we appreciated that very much. Couldn't happen without that.
Great, thank you. And I, and I think one of the things I I did, we did speak and many of us thought that, oh, we're not talking about Fiesta Square. Take it back. I'm not going to mention it right now. Talking about Mercantile. Um, any other questions for Steve? All right. We don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Guerger?
No, just to reiterate what everyone else has said, well, Steve's right here, just the um really valuing the the partnership and and just looking at everything that has taken place in um in the mercantile. And in your other, you know, the other uh project, the other benefits at La Fiesta Square and the community. project, the other benefits at Lafayette Square and the community, your commitment to the community as a partner, you know, with the this feels like it's going to be like the Steve Cortese as the business person or whatever, but with the partnering with the art gallery and all of the, you know, just having the communities sort of interested heart, I really appreciate it, so. While we have that opportunity, so, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Steve. You're not moving away, right? Are you staying local hopefully too? You may have gone already. Anyway, so I, any other questions for Narup, or should we go to public comment? Oh, Councilmember Dawson?
I have a quick question. This is, I guess, a historic thing. I'm not sure, Narup, if you'll know this, but I noticed on the agreement there was a two, a two levels parking structure proposed as part of this agreement. Do you, can you give any history on this? Because obviously there's, there's not.
Actually, the mention of that two level structure is the surface level that you see at the street level. And then there is a basement garage that you can access off of Doing Avenue.
I've never been, I didn't realize that.
Lafayette Circle, up of Lafayette Circle, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so let's go to public comment.
If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Mayor, there are no raised hands.
All right, great, so um. Any discussion or do I hear a motion? Councilmember Dury?
I'll move approval of the sale of Lafayette Mercantile to Site Centers.
Sure. Any other discussion? All right, not seeing any. All right, Vice Mayor Geringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dury?
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Quok?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so it's unanimous. Great, congratulations and thank you, Steve, for finding a nice fire. All right, we want to item 10C with Sarah Allen.
You ready for me?
We are, thank you.
Excellent. I'll try and be brief because I know you all have had a long couple nights. So, good evening, Mayor Kandell and members of the council that were here this evening to discuss the alcohol beverage control license for Holly's Homegrown. So this property is located on the corner of Moraga Road and Plaza Way, formerly the Squirrel's Coffee Shop. Holly's Homegrown is a retail store selling a variety of culinary and medicinal herbs and other products and also providing a storefront for other local entrepreneurs. And the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control does require a finding of public convenience and necessity for requests where there's a concentration of alcohol sales in the area. And that's primarily based on the census tract, the number of alcohol sales within a given census tract. A little bit of background, just on the Plaza Way overlay. So I know many of you are familiar with this, but in the Plaza Way Overlay District was created in 2012 to really enliven the plaza and provide for the community gathering space, attract unique tenants, and then also, of course, specifically to improve parking and circulation in the area. In 2014, the Poy family, which is part of this parcel, opted into the overlay. They signed an agreement, obviously did some facade upgrades, and then also have agreed to ensuring specific uses would be maintained in this, in these parcels, on this parcel. Staff is comfortable with making the finding a public convenience and necessity for three main reasons. One is that the land use is compatible with what's allowed in the district. There are many adjacent uses that also serve alcohol. And also, the majority of the use will actually be retail. This is a very minor component. Additionally, there is a local economic development component in that Holly's Homegrown is allowing local vendors to showcase their wines and sort of promoting local businesses in the area. And then also it does, does, is consistent with the goals of the Plaza Way Overlay District. Additionally, staff reviewed the matter with the police chief and he has no concerns with the issue. So this evening, staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to submit a letter making that finding of public convenience and necessity to ABC for Holly's Homegrown specifically. And then also seeking direction from the council as to whether or not this may be something that we could delegate to the city manager and the police chief for future applications. Staff's gotten feedback from the business community that this is sort of a a timing issue. There's a lot of other state and local requirements for like alcohol licensing. And so if the council's desire, we could bring back a letter that requests or delegates the task to the city manager and the police chief. I'm available for questions if you have me.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for Sarah? All right, anybody? Councilmember Dury?
Yeah, just to confirm, the second ask there is not in our.
Thank you.
It is sort of the second paragraph in the background kind of information. But there is not a formal letter right now. It would be a request or direction from the council for staff to bring back that formal letter, if it was your desire.
Okay.
And it's also not on the agenda, so we would need to bring it back.
Yeah, you had covered the future agenda.
Great, Councilmember Dawson?
I just have a quick question, just for clarification, and the conclusions. It says by allowing the requested permit, allow sale of beer and wine and for consumption in the designated areas within the public right of way. Is that just allowable under the current circumstances? Because I thought that public consumption wasn't, you know, open containers was not something we did in sidewalks, public right of ways.
We can do that. We have done that specifically with some, with encroachment permits. Certainly, now there's a temporary issuance for COVID, but specifically in this area as well, because of Plaza Way Overlay, we have done encouragement permits that allow the alcohol sales on the street side. So the the property lines actually go right up to the building, so Plaza Way, the right of way extends to essentially the building facade. So for instance, where sideboard patio is, that area is one such example.
Okay. So this permit that they're applying for would allow for that under the current encroachment. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, any more questions? No, okay, so let's go to public comment.
Mayor, we have Holly in attendance.
Oh, great.
Can you see me?
We can, thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to introduce myself and also just let you all know that I've been selling, I'm actually, I grow culinary herbs and my family's been in agriculture for years. And in fact, my family has a winery in Santa Barbara County. So a lot of what we'll be doing is wine education and food and wine pairing and things like that. So I'm really excited to be able to share this knowledge with the community. I've sold at farmers markets in Moraga and Walnut Creek and San Francisco for about the last eight years. And so when this property came up, I was thrilled to be able to have the opportunity to use it, not only to showcase my products, but also I'm the co-chair and founder of the Hacienda Holiday Fair. I live in Moraga and we have about 45 local vendors, about 80% of whom are from La Merinda, which we're very proud of. And so a lot of those people will be selling their wares here as well because they, you know, that go with my things like ceramics and cutting boards and, you know. We'll also have pop-ups for local vendors as well that make, they can come for the day. And several artists will be showing their works here in the store too, so. So it'll be a really nice community hub and a way of integrating all of the work that I've done already with them, community artisans, and be able to showcase my stuff too, so. Just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. That really sounds lovely. Vice Mayor Geringer?
In the interest of full disclosure, I have some of Holly's homegrown herbs in my pantry that have been purchased at farmers markets.
Oh, thank you, good. Well, come get more. We're doing lots of new things too, so. Sounds great. Councilmember Dawson, did you have your hand up or no?
No, but I just wanted to say welcome and what a lovely business. Thank you for coming into town.
Sounds great, thank you. So I guess I don't have any more questions, but yeah, I thank you for really willing to take a chance on Lafayette. We love having new business members like you. Thank you.
Thanks.
So do we have any other questions?
We have another speaker.
Perfect, yeah.
Grace Dixon.
Hi, I just wanted to say welcome to Holly. That's all I wanted to say. I mean, that's my neighborhood. Somebody's finally moving into that space. Yay. I'm excited.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, Mayor, you have no more speakers.
Great, okay, so any other comments or questions? Or do I hear a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion to authorize the city manager to submit a letter to the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control affirming that the issuance of an on-sale beer and wine type 42 alcohol license to Holly's Homegrown would serve the public convenience or necessity.
One second? Oh, wait, no, that's perfect. Any other discussion? All right, not seeing any. All right, Vice Mayor Geringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dury?
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Quok?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so it's unanimous. Thank you, welcome. And also, we're trying to, if we want to direct, to see if we want future meetings with additional background materials and a formal recommendation. So these kind of requests don't need to come to council. I think that's how I'm understanding this. Do we want to give that direction? Councilmember Dury?
I'm open to it, but I have to admit, I'm a little bit leery about delegating the areas of the alcoholic beverages, so.
Fair.
So I'm
Okay.
Also open to having it come back, to have us, you know, review it as a policy issue.
Sounds great. I think that that would be very reasonable direction. And then we can research it and figure if it's reasonable for us or not. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for presentation. All right, now we are on to consent calendar. So we've got item 8A. I'm trying to see where this. And that was the minutes, I guess there was a.
Yeah, there was something on page 25 of the minutes, the action item. It says move second carried and during guarantee direct staff to add a crosswalk in intersection Burton Drive, Silver Island Drive, Lucas Drive and Somerset Drive, directed transportation circulation officials to look at adding a crosswalk at Roars. But at the end of that first one, technically what we did, and I confirmed this with Narup and confirmed it with Mike Moran, we directed staff to add the crosswalk if, after researching the historical record, Director Moran finds no reason not to add it.
Sounds great.
He did carry out the search and confirmed it wasn't reasonable.
Okay, so how do we, do we have to vote on that, or do we just take that direction? To fix the minutes.
It would just be a motion to approve it as amended.
Okay, I'll move.
Okay.
Minutes be approved as amended, so.
Second? Discussion? No, okay, so Vice Mayor Geringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dury?
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Quok?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so we will modify, amend the. Is that, yeah, thank you. All right, now we'll go on to item 8D. And for the letter?
Thank you, Mayor. In talking to Councilmember Enduri, he correctly pointed out that since the governor has until October the 10th to sign AB 361 into law and his emergency order expires at the end of this month, there would be a 10-day period where we would be, if he did not, if he didn't sign it before September 30th, we would have to go back to the old ways of conducting business. Therefore, the last sentence of the letter I request be amended to say for these reasons, the city of Lafayette strongly urges you to sign AB 361 into law prior to the expiration of your executive order on September 30th, 2021. That was.
So do I have a motion to amend the letter?
You mean 2021?
Yes, and yes, thank you.
And I'll move the council authorize the mayor to sign and submit the attached letter as amended to governor's.
One second? Sounds great. All right, Vice Mayor Geringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dury?
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Quok?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Thank you. Thank you for catching that, Carl. All right, and so item 8F. Carl, you pulled this.
Yep, okay, so last night, we approved reconstituting Decipic. That was on the consent calendar.
Oh, yeah.
I had mentioned in an earlier discussion with Decipic that I'd be willing to take that on as liaison. So I talked to Councilmember Quok to ask if he would be willing to either let me do that or trade for something, and he very graciously said he wouldn't mind if I take that on. So what I'm proposing is that I replace Councilmember Quok as the primary liaison for Decipic.
Great, okay.
Okay, now, since I've talked to Councilmember Quok, I couldn't talk to anyone else, you or anyone else. So, nope. Long ago, not so long ago, a council member Dawson and I had talked about Decipic and what it might do. So I have not mentioned this to her, so she can say, forget it. But I'm asking you, Mayor Kandell, if you would consider relinquishing your spot as the alternate to Councilmember Dawson. And then she and I would work together to reconstitute Decipic.
I, thank you. I was hoping not to, I was hoping, we're so close to letting Mayor Geringer make her decisions. And so to me, that is more not up to me because she's so close. And so I'm going to defer to her to help make that decision because I'm sure she's thinking about next year.
I am currently happy to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Enduri to, and council as primary and Councilmember Dawson as alternate to Decipic. And should we say what the actual acronym stands for?
Yeah. Down Sound Street Improvement Master Plan Implementation Committee. Uh, but Councilmember Dawson, are you?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Endury. Uh, actually, um, I, I would, and, and just a little background, Councilmember Endury and I were talking about, um, since we are working on the, um, ARPA as well as with Chamber, that there's some good synergies, um, around the, the, that, that particular, um, committee too, working on that together. So. So, thank you for your consideration, both, uh, Mayor Candell and, and Councilmember Geringer. I appreciate it.
So happy to, can, happy to consider that. I think I was the, I think in reading it, that there was one meeting in the last couple of years or something and, and I did sit in on that meeting. So, um, but anyway, it, glad to have it moving forward. And if it's, so I had put a motion out there or, you know, if, um, it doesn't get a second. Thank you, wait. Thank you, Councilmember Quoc. I was going to say, if it doesn't get a second, we can, you know, hold and do it through the appointment process, but.
Can we have a, a motion that adopts the council assignment, uh, calendar as amended and it would take care of Councilmember Quoc's appointments and this one change on the calendar?
Right. We don't need public comment on this, do we?
Can't recall, Mayor Candell, if we took it earlier or we did not in terms of.
We did not.
So then, so then, yes, we would, but I don't see any hands raised.
I'm going to make sure I call it at least.
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature now. There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All right. Vice Mayor Geringer.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Endury.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So thank you. All right. On to council member reports and activities. Anybody? Did you, right. Vice, Mayor Geringer, did I see your hand go up?
Go, let Carl go ahead.
Okay, Carl, sorry.
No, go ahead, Carl.
Oh, no, I was, um, I wasn't, I mean, go ahead, Carl.
Been waving my hand. Let me, um, I, uh, I think a number of us were at the, uh, uh, Lafayette Community Garden Open House on Sunday. It was a great event. People who, Janet Thomas and the others who have been so involved in that. It's just a beautiful place. If you haven't been there lately, I recommend that you, you visit during one of their, uh, open hours.
Any other councilmembers? Okay. So I, so I do, I, I wanted just my ideas that we may want to bring up. I know David Clark has been bringing up, um, updating our ADU ordinance. And I want to see if we could possibly put that on an agenda. Do I get, people think that's a good idea? In order, especially to update it in particular with our creek setbacks, because it does seem to be missing. And we have a lot of ideas. Was that?
Mayor Candell, if you, if, uh, we are, our office is looking into that with the planning department. So maybe if you could give us a little more time to make a recommendation.
Sounds great.
We think that a change is, we, we have been looking into it, um, since the comment has been, had been made at previous meetings. So, um, if appropriate, we can follow up and bring that back.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Uh, Councilwoman Dawson.
I just want to add to your thought on, on that and, and David Clark's as well. I've been attending the APA California Conference and, uh, listening to some great sessions. But they're definitely with the, you know, the, the new laws that are, um, being enacted now, really recommending to municipalities that we tighten up our objective standards. Um, because that's going to be the great defense when it comes to, um, looking at obviously standards and developers kind of looking at different things. Um, so I think that's great. While you're looking at that, but I'm wondering to your point if we should kind of review anything we might need to review, um, or want to review, just to be as defensive and protective as we can of our existing intent with the, the policy that we currently have.
Great. Um, Councilmember, uh, Endury.
And Councilmember Dawson, you're, um, speaking directly to the residential, the, the new, new bills that affect the residential.
Uh, yeah, both actually multifamily homes, um, as well as residential, the, you know, SB nine and, and ten, um, as well as other ones like thirty-five that are already out there. Um, you know, so.
Right. Cause we never did, really did the residential ones. Yeah. Cool. Um, also, um, our tree ordinance. Is the staff looking into our tree ordinance as well as, along with the whole wildfire? Environment?
Yes, Mayor.
Is that something that is going on or?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, uh, in your approved planning department work plan. It's a task on the work team for this year.
Great. All right. Thank you. Those are the things that I had. All right. So on to city manager update.
I don't have any updates, Mayor.
Sounds great. All right. So Councilmember Endury. Appointing some of the creeks committee.
Yes. Okay. So just in time for tomorrow's, 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 uh, creek committee uh, meeting. And, uh, just I might mention, Councilmember Quoc, you was the primary uh, liaison. You might want to, uh, sit in on, on this one. It looks like it's a pretty full agenda, uh, but very fortunate to have Mary Jo Cass, uh, apply uh, for the Creeks Committee. So, um, recommending that, uh, she be appointed for a term, uh, that would expire on June, well, the term would be June thirty, twenty twenty.
I second that. Thank you. Any discussion? Great. I wholeheartedly support Mary Jo Cass.
Yeah.
On the Creeks Committee. I think she'll bring a lot of, uh, good energy. So what's on the table? Vice Mayor Geringer.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Endury.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. I saw your mouth. Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Welcome, Mary Jo Cass to the Creeks Commission. Committee. I keep calling it commission. Yay. All right. Fourteen A. For the League of Cities.
So, um, so basically remember when, um, and for, for Councilmember Quoc, um, I, I am the delegate, the voting delegate and council member or mayor, sorry. I mean, goodness, Mayor Candell is the, um, alternate. And, uh, we both will be attending next week, probably locked in my room or something. No, I'm kidding. But we will be attending, um, in person in Sacramento. And coming before the, uh, General Assembly will be two resolutions. They will go through more committee, um, review at the, um, at in person at the, um, annual conference. So there may be a few amendments or changes, but, but last year or now in the before times, a couple of years ago, there weren't really significant changes that, um, would have caused the voting member to go against what the council's will is. So on the first, hopefully you all had time to read them and review. Um, on the first resolution, I just reading it retro, it was brought by the city of Rancho Cucamonga and part of the requirements is it has to have five other cities sign on. I'm not going to read all those names. But it's basically calling on the state legislature to pass legislation that provides for a fair and equitable, equitable distribution of the Bradley Burns one percent local sales tax from in-state online purchases. Uh, to, and to do that based on data, um, where projects are shipped to and that rightfully takes into consideration the impacts that fulfillment centers have on host cities, but also provides for a fair share to California cities that do not and or cannot have a fulfillment center within the jurisdiction. Um, I person, happy to answer questions to the extent that I can. Um, I am, uh, very supportive of this. Um, Senator Glazer, in terms of, in terms of having California cities add this to their, you know, platform, they do have some policies around sales tax sourcing and Senator Glazer carried, um, legislation pretty much from when he got into office on, uh, trying to make, uh, changes in this, uh, space. And just recently, one of the elements of this, um, making this work is to have the data to know where the, you know, where people are receiving. So if, um, where people are, where the site location is of where the product actually goes, not just where it came out of a fulfillment center. So his bill SB seven nine two, uh, did pass in this session and it's on the governor's desk and it requires that, um, retailers with an annual qualified sales of tangible personal property transaction online that exceeds fifty million dollars for the previous calendar year to include with their tax return, a schedule that reports for each local jurisdiction. The gross receipts from that, the qualified sale of the tangible property shipped or delivered to a purchaser in that specific local jurisdiction. And it does also, um, have a, for, uh, not participating or not, um, for any violation or refusing to provide that, um, data with their tax returns, there is a penalty. Um, I would say it's a five thousand dollar penalty. And if you're talking fifty million, but we won't argue that right now. But, um, anyway, I think that there, um, this is, um, you know, it would definitely impact us, um, you know, in a positive way, um, if we were able to get those. I am not going to go as far in, but right now we do get, uh, some benefit through the pooling through the county. And I know that those numbers, um, in this last, during the pandemic, um, were, were higher because people were purchasing, um, from online, but to also be able to, um, uh, have this ability to have it be the location and the source of the purchase. Um, to have a more equitable distribution would be great, but happy to answer questions and hear input and guidance from my colleagues.
Any questions? Councilwoman Dawson.
Uh, I guess, sorry, I guess it's, are we in a discussion after questions? So.
Yeah.
Are we kind of in discussions or because we're all?
We can't do any public, do any public comment on this. That was my only question, right?
No, good point.
Yeah. Right. So I don't have any real questions.
I was just going to say, I think this is a good, you know, coupled with Senator Glazer's bill. It's great. Um, it'll be real, um, you know, uh, more equitable for sure. Um, that, that cities can take a part of that. So that I, I think it's good.
Okay. So any more questions? Right. So go to public comment. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Just clarifying. Um, and I know, I know you all know this, but just for, you know, the public record that this is, um, giving the California cities and our, um, advocacy arm the ability to lobby, advocate and work with the legislature to make these things happen. It's not like, oh, if we all approve this at Cal Cities, that it happens. It's a legislative and action platform. And I know you all know that.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any public comment?
If anyone wishes to make a public comment on this item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. There are no raised hands, Mayor.
All right. So any discussion? All right. Not seen you. So got a motion?
So actually I'm, oh, what we can do separately, that's fine. So it's discuss and direct.
And direct. Okay. Right. Um, the support, so the discussion part, it does seem like a very reasonable. And I like the fact that it's not, it's, it's not saying that we get our exact number. It's come up with a plan to make it equitable. And I, and I thought that was the right way because the people who do have the distribution centers, yeah, they get a lot of impacts, right? And so they should get, you know, definitely some, um, some extra money to handle all the impacts from the centers. So I thought that was a very reasonable way to structure this.
Great. And if there are any major changes, well, I guess there's really not a way that we can bring it back, but I can confer with the mayor um, at Cal Cities. So before the vote, but I don't, I don't anticipate, um, that there will be a lot of, um, changes coming out of any committees. Um, the second one and, um, I'm sure everybody read this as well, but it's also, um, a resolution, um, calling upon the governor and the legislature to provide necessary funding for the CPUC to fulfill its obligation to inspect railroad lines to ensure that operators are removing illegal dumping graffiti and homeless encampments that degrade the quality of life and results in increased public safety concerns for communities and neighborhoods that abut the railroad right-of-way. Um, it didn't, um, they will go to committees. It didn't have the detail that, um, in background that staff, because Cal Cities has been working for a very long time on the, um, the Bradley, well, as long as we've had Amazon and others, but, um, this one staff just had some technical uh, changes to the language suggested that there may be some MOU relationships that should be set up. And so, um, I'm less knowledgeable other than we all know, well, I don't know that we all know, but that around our railroad, uh, we need some level of assistance to those cities, um, who have, you know, the illegal dumping and graffiti and uh, homeless encampments to, um, you know, be able to address that and to have some sort of enforcement. Um, so if others have more, you know, technical concerns or questions, I'm open to guidance.
And any questions? All right. So let's open it up for public comment.
If anyone wishes to comment on this item, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom. Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Great. Thank you. Any, uh, discussion? I think that's a, a really good idea again for Cal Cities to take this up as a, it's one of those things that nobody really thinks about it until you actually get it. And it's like, ah, you know, let's come up with a solution for it. So, and to help those cities out. Good. Sounds great.
So thank you for the direction and discussion.
Okay. Um, all right. So we can adjourn. One more Vice Mayor Geringer.
So we had B, fourteen B. And, um, again, just it's.
Oh, gosh. You're right. That's a bylaw change. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
When we're down.
And really it's, um, you know, I did go through all the red lines and I'm sure everybody else did go through that. So it is just as it says, it's to adjust the composition of the board. Uh, to achieve higher impact and, you know, more representative by adding the, um, voting director seats to the board, the Cal Cities Board from each of the five, one from each of the five diversity caucuses, um, highly support. And, uh, then also, um, on transitional members to, um, the National League of Cities, you know, to have from the Cal Directors, a voting advisor. Those transitional members back to the Cal Cities Board. And then the second part, um, or third part, um, is to, um, update. I don't know if all of you have noticed, but over the last year or so, League of California Cities short, is not the league, um, it's Cal Cities. And so it, throughout the bylaws, it makes that change. So that when you're speaking about, um, the League of California Cities, it's Cal Cities, the short version. So that is in the bylaws as well. And, and then, yes, to. And, and then, yes, to fully recognize, to add the seats, and then to also recognize the importance of the diversity caucuses. And I think it's a huge, I think supporting all of those amendments is a good thing.
All right, any discussion?
Sure, obviously, I'm very much in support of seeing the five diversity caucuses have a seat at the table, literally, by adding five more board seats, so I think that's a very important part of this, even though it's seemingly a little bit ministerial, but I actually think that that's a very significant and important development for League of Cities, so I'm very pleased to see that it's been proposed.
Yeah. And as we get back into things, I would encourage, encourage, Sam Kager will probably be contacting you, Councilmember Quoc, to, you know, she does with all of us, to just reach out to you, to talk to you about CalCities and any involvement, so. Not on the agenda, Molly, Mala, but I thought I would just throw it in there.
All right, so do we have any public comment? Just making sure I don't miss. Did I already ask for public comment? I didn't, did on this one. Okay.
There's no hands raised. There are no hands raised.
Sounds great, thanks. Okay, so I think, yes, absolutely, give our enthusiastic support for the, the changes suggested. All right. So now, can we adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, great, I'll adjourn, and I, I guess four of us are going to be at the meeting next week. Let's try to see each other.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good night.
Okay.
Night, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye.